Good evening, everyone, and welcome to our first meeting of July. I hope you guys all had a very nice Fourth of July. And we're going to start our meeting, but I want to just make a couple of acknowledgements. I see in the audience, I see our Assemblywoman Nancy Munoz is here. Nancy, thanks for -- and I see our former Mayor Jordan Glatzer. Jordan, good to see you guys. So with that, I'm going to ask our Clerk to read the adequate notice of compliance statement.
Adequate notice of this meeting has been provided by the City Clerk's Office in preparation of the annual Council Annual Meeting Notice dated January 3, 2019, which was properly distributed and posted per statutory requirements. Please be advised that the fire exits are to my right, your left, and at the back of the room. The City has a listening system to assist the hearing impaired. If anyone needs hearing assistance, please obtain the system at the DAIS and return it thereafter.
Thank you. Roll call, please.
Mr. Bowman?
Here.
Ms. Fox?
Here.
Mr. Gould?
Here.
Ms. Little?
Here.
Ms. McTiernan?
Here.
Mr. Barton?
Here.
President Nigent?
Here. Okay, if we could all rise for the pledge, lead us in the pledge. I-
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Madam Clerk, would you please read notices regarding closed session hearings and comments?
A closed session meeting as authorized by state statute was announced and held prior to the start of this meeting, and the known items for discussion were listed on the published closed session agenda. Please be advised that council meetings are broadcast live on Comcast Channel 36 and Verizon Channel 30, and rebroadcast on Thursdays and Saturdays on Hometown TV on Comcast 36 and Verizon 33. When invited to speak, please come to the lectern, clearly state your name and address, spell your last name, and speak into the podium microphone so that your comments can be understood by all and properly recorded. Whenever an audience or council member reads from a prepared statement, please give or email a copy to the City Clerk's Office at Rlicatis@cityofsummit.org. To help facilitate an orderly meeting and to permit all to be heard, speakers are asked to limit their comments to approximately three minutes or so in length. Unless you are using electronic device to follow the meeting agenda, or needed for professional emergency contact purposes, please turn it off. Thank you.
Thank you. Before I continue, there are a couple of chairs up here. There's two chairs up here. There's a chair here. People want to take these chairs and put them on the side so people can sit down. Does anybody want to take a couple of the chairs? I can see more people are coming in. Get some chairs. Thanks, Paul. This is -- wow, we're going to-
There's also some chairs outside.
Paul, maybe you and you guys can bring some chairs in so people can sit down. It's going to be, I suspect, a long meeting, so I don't want people to stand. And to the extent that some of you during the course of the meeting want to get up, stretch your leg, and give folks who are standing a chance to sit down, that would be great. All right. Okay, let's move on. Okay, approval of minutes. Do I have a motion to approve the minutes for regular and closed session for June 18, 2019?
So moot.
Second.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
I'll abstain since I missed that. Onto reports. Our mayor is not here tonight, so I'll turn it to the City Administrator, Michael Rogers. Michael.
Thank you, Council President. I know everyone's here to hear my administrative report, so thanks for coming. Good evening. First, I would like to express my sincere appreciation to the Department of Community Programs on another outstanding Fourth of July celebration in Summit. I'd also like to thank the Summit Police, Fire, Public Works, and the Volunteer First Aid Squad for their support, as well as to the mayor and council and the Communications Office for their part in creating another fun and successful day in our community. As I mentioned at a prior council meeting, the Summit Police Department is offering a Fight Back Self-Defense Class for women in grades nine and older. This will be held on Thursday, August 8, from 6:00 p.m. to 8:30 p.m. at the Summit Middle School. It's going to be led by Summit Police Officer and Police Academy Physical Training Instructor Donald D. Philippis. This is a free course, and it's appropriate for all ability levels, and will focus on useful defense techniques and situational awareness skills. To register, please send an email with name, age, and phone number to admin@spdnj.org by Monday, August 5. Participants are asked to wear comfortable workout clothing for the hands-on training exercises. For more information about the course, it will be available on the Summit, cityofsummit.org website. And finally, the Union County Board of Elections will hold a series of public demonstrations of its new Express Vote XL machines that will be used in the November 5, 2019 general election. The goal of the demos is to improve familiarity with the new voting machines and poll workers prior to the voting day. The first public demo will be held on July 16 at the Summit Community Night on the Village Green from 7 to 8:30 p.m. Additional dates are listed on the City website as well. And that's all I have for this evening. Council President, thank you.
Thank you. I will dispense of giving any kind of report, and instead, because I know everyone, or I think most people are here for the Parkline discussion, I don't want to hold it up. What I do want to do before I let the folks from the Parkline Foundation speak, I want to talk about the context so that people have a sense of what it is, and I want to be transparent about where we are. And I also want to kind of give you the rules of the road for how we're going to proceed tonight so that everybody's clear how things are going to happen, okay? So for the context part, Parkline Project obviously has a long history. I'm not going to go through that history. I'm going to talk about just the recent past, okay? Last year, council entered into a memorandum of understanding with the Parkline Foundation. That outlined how we were going to go moving forward and the responsibilities of each party. So it's clear the Parkline Foundation is a nonprofit that is willing to fund the construction of this project. But ultimately, this is a city project. It's a city park or a walkway, whatever you want to call it, if it were to be built. And as such, the maintenance and security aspects of it, as drafted in that memorandum of understanding, would be the responsibility of the city. The first step in that memorandum was to have a public workshop where issues and concerns and questions could be raised about the project. Past December, we had such a workshop where questions were raised. The aim of tonight's meeting is to answer some of those questions that may have not been answered in that workshop. Just so everyone is aware, the residents on Henry Street invited council members to see the elevated walkway, or rail line, if you will, from their backyards. Every member of council went and did that, and they talked to the residents as well. In addition, members of the Parkline, myself, and Larry Costigan, who lives on Henry Street, met separately and went behind their houses on Henry Street. I, as well as some other members of council, have also walked in other areas of the track with members of the foundation, including around Edgar's Court. Prior to this presentation that you will see tonight, I met with certain members of the Parkline Foundation to go over the presentation and give my suggestions and thoughts as to what I would like to see addressed. Additionally, council and city staff received a preview of the presentation and made comments and had questions that were sent to the members of the Parkline Foundation in advance of this meeting. That's the context, and that's me trying to give you as much of a sense of what has occurred in the recent past, okay? Now for the rules of the road. We will have the foundation, through its members and its representatives, make their presentation in whole, after which I will ask council members to ask any questions that they may have. After council has finished asking questions, members of the public can ask questions. I will call on people. You will come forward to the podium, state your name and address of where you reside. You can ask questions, and I will direct the appropriate people to respond. This is not the time to make comments. That will come later. As they say in Jeopardy, it needs to be in the form of a question, okay? Otherwise, and there's no reason to have a long wind-up and then a pitch. Just go for the question, okay? So once all -- and what I would say is if you have heard your question being asked and answered, there's no reason to ask it again. Move along. You can ask, though, follow-up questions. If you are up here, you have a question, and you have a follow-up as you go, I'll let you go ahead, do your follow-up questions, okay? But don't ask the same question over and over, expecting a different result. Once the public questions are completed, I will ask council members again if they have any further questions, and I will ask city staff if they have questions. Once we're done with all the questions, we will move on to comments. I will strictly apply the three-minute rule for comments. Again, if your comment has been made, I would ask you to consider whether it's necessary to repeat it, or whether you can simply say you agreed with some prior speaker on your comment. There are lots of folks in here. We want to get through this as expeditionally, but as comprehensively as possible, okay? Once we have heard all comments, I will ask council members as to what they think about the project and how we should proceed. Once council starts to speak, we will not entertain any further comments from the floor. I expect everyone to be treated with respect. There is no yelling, there's no shouting, there's no interrupting, there's no talking over each other. Everyone is entitled to their opinions, but no one is entitled to be abused. Let me be clear, by saying they're legitimate points on all sides. Residents have a right to want more walking paths or biking paths in Summit. Residents have a right to be concerned about privacy, security, and feasibility. And residents have a right to be concerned or ask questions about costs and priorities. But I want us to all walk out of here tonight, being proud of the fact that we can have a civic discourse and engagement, and that we feel that we have listened to each other. With that, I'll introduce the folks of the Parkline Foundation to introduce themselves and begin. Thank you.
Good evening. I'm Jay Brinkerhoff. I live at 12 Westminster Road, and I'm an officer and a trustee of the Summit Parkline Foundation.
Jay, if you could just speak a little louder.
A little louder, sure. Council President Nidu and council members, thank you for this opportunity to show you some of our recent progress and our plans for the next steps in the development of Summit Parkline. In a nutshell, we would like the City to enter into a contract for the engineering and design of a new pedestrian bridge over Morris Avenue. Of course, the foundation will provide the funds for this, but I will come back to that in a moment. As Council President has stated, you have the presentation, which provides information regarding access, screening, and security for the entire trail. We will show how we can address, in an attractive manner, concerns you or members of the community may have about these issues. We have and we will continue to seek and incorporate advice from Chief Wegg and Chief Evers. Our website lists a few of the many studies which document the increase in property values of homes near the trails and parks. That's on our website, not to be covered tonight. We have asked our consultant, Bob Thomas, to take about 10 minutes to explain our photos and images. It's a very short presentation. But nearly all of the members of the Parkline Foundation are here this evening to answer any questions you may have and to provide additional insights. Then Dr. Rubino will say just a few words in closing. I think all of you, or nearly all of you, were at the community workshop last December when I introduced Bob, and he helped outline our plans. For anyone who was not there, I think it's important to note, Bob is a nationally recognized expert who has devoted his entire 40-year career to trail and environmentally sensitive development. Now let me come back to the Morris Avenue Bridge, which we see as the next important step in the development process. Some time ago, City Engineer Schreger and I created an RFP and sent it to three engineering firms, which he chose. All three firms responded, and after further discussions with them, Assistant Engineer Rick Matias and I conducted site visits with the three firms. Based on that, and after that, we agreed that the firm of Mont McDonald was the best choice. Mont McDonald is a prominent internationally recognized engineering firm with a strong local presence. I'm assuming some of you may be familiar with Mont McDonald. They've been in existence for over 100 years and have a strong transportation specialty within the engineering field. They will evaluate the existing conditions, present bridge alternatives, and coordinate with the utility and communication companies. They will prepare plans and specifications, a bid summary, and a recommendation for an award of a contract. I recognize the importance of tonight's meeting is for the dialogue that President Nidu has introduced appropriately. I just think it's important that everyone be mindful of what we see as the foundation in the development of this project is a new pedestrian bridge over Morris Avenue. Of course, we'd be happy to address any questions you may have. Thank you. Bob, will you now please take everyone through the short slide presentation?
Yes, please. I certainly will. Council President Nidu and your fellow council members, thank you very much for inviting us again. I think everyone can see the slides, and let me just get the right button on here. Got it. Okay, thank you. All right, so the Summit Parkline, of course, is a rail trail. That is an old railroad that is being taken up and replaced by a trail which is planned to accommodate walking and bicycling. So the bridge that you just heard about is will also accommodate bicycles. What we're looking at is a -- because the railroad began down here. Is that going to show? Nope. Okay.
You got an arrow on the screen?
Yeah, okay. You can just follow. Right. All right, the railroad began in downtown Summit. There was a bridge over Broad Street, so what we're proposing is to link with the green and the downtown, come with a new bridge ultimately over Broad Street, have entrances at that location all along the way, at all the various roads and streets. You can see we've marked the location for entrances, also for emergency access. There are actually, on that map, there are emergency access points, the stars, and they're all numbered. So we're looking at providing very good connections all the way out to Bryant Park and to the residential areas and through the park areas of Hidden Valley, Bryant Park. Next?
You got this.
Oh, I haven't. Okay. Let's try that. There we go. Many of you are familiar, there's a one section called Phase One. It was a pilot section, just to take up the track in one area from Overlook Medical Center down to Morris Avenue. It's a trail. It's used by a lot of people. It's been kind of rough, and so what we're looking at is what could you do with that? Obviously, putting in benches, signage, entranceway, landscaping, all sorts of things are certainly possible here to really bring this up to a first-grade trail that would work for walkers, bikers, for disabled people, and other trail users. There's a new bench that's been going in. There's been some cleanup there. This is the existing trail as it works its way down to Morris Avenue. And what we're looking at is adding benches. They would be well-used, as well as sort of called wayside signs that give the history of the area and other important information. Just going back for a second, this is what you see now, and we're proposing a fair amount of tree planting and other landscaping to really make this an attractive place, but also to provide a buffering between the trail and the communities on either side of the In the next phase of work, we're not proposing necessarily that lighting go in. We just want to show that that is something that occurs on a lot of trails. The question was, gee, how would you handle wiring? Well, the answer is that most trail lighting today is done with solar, with battery backup. We're looking, of course, the bridge that you heard about. There was a bridge there over Morris Avenue. It was removed. My guess, it had to do with the clearance. The railroad was built in the late 19th century, so the modern clearances are not met. So a new bridge would take advantage of the existing abutments, but then also be elevated so that it would give you the required clearance for modern traffic. At this location, to the left-hand side, we'd also have a ramp going up from the sidewalk that you see that would give access both for walkers, hikers, and bicyclists, but also for maintenance and emergency vehicles. So if you had a fire, for example, occurring somewhere along this route, it would give access for firefighting, also for any police activity. Right now, it's fairly difficult to get up there. As to what the bridge would look like, obviously, there's a firm that's been selected to do it. It would probably be something of this nature, a prefabricated pedestrian bicycle bridge. It would be at least eight feet wide, probably 10, to allow people to pass each other. There's also other types of bridges. A steel arch bridge like this would be appropriate as well. Let's take a look at some of the existing conditions and how we would deal with things. Here you are. You can see some of the old rails. You're up on the embankment, and of course, to your right, you can see many of the residences that are in this area. Many people have fences down at the bottom, but there's a great deal of concern, and I understand as well. I live in an historic district in Philadelphia, and privacy is very important to my wife and myself and my neighbors. So what we're looking at is how could we not only make the trail more attractive, but also provide buffering and literally protection? So looking at this, here's one approach of tree planting, using evergreens, which don't lose their leaves, and provide privacy. Let's just go back. This is the same, exactly the same photograph. That's what's there today. You can see the wires, their towers. They're still there, but when you plant, and you can get larger trees and put them in, and provide more. And if you go a little further than that, you can also do fencing, along with landscaping. Obviously, you can see there are other improvements being shown at the left. There's some flowers and shrubs going in, as long as interpretive signage. And this is a section through there. So what you see is, looking towards the east, to the right is where you have the right-of-way. Public right-of-way comes down to the bottom of the embankment. Beyond that are the backyards of houses there on Henry Street and some other streets. And by putting in fencing, looking at the, you know, the required eye height of a fence, if it's six feet, you can't see over it. You could look up, and we would actually calculate the, in designing it, what angle would you have to meet in order not to see anyone's windows? And that can be done. This is very similar. I serve as Chair of the Philadelphia Historical Commission. We do a lot of work in historic areas like Summit. And one of the things, when someone's adding one to a roof, we have to say, from the trail, you know, how high would the, how far would the building have to be set back, or how high would the fence or the vegetation be? And this would be, could be done, so it's a very pleasant thing with all the vegetation, but also provides the privacy that's absolutely necessary for every citizen. This is just an example. This is from one of the homes on Henry. This is what you see today. The property goes back to where that ladder is, then the embankment is in the right-of-way, and it's overgrown. One approach, if you put a fence there, this would provide visual privacy. That's mulch shown there on the, and that's actually kind of rough with just the fencing and the mulch. So you could go ahead and add in rich landscaping. The angle of the embankment is such that you can plant trees. You can just see areas of the embankment that are covered with trees already. Things can be done to plant on a slope. There's all kinds of landscape techniques available. But this way, you really have the privacy. There's no loss of security from, right now, people can get up on the rail bed and come down at night or something. This really helps to prevent that. Also, when you have the trail there, we would design it in such a way that because patrol vehicles could go up on it, whether they're police on bicycles or police in patrol cars, knowing that they're circulating, someone who has ill will at heart is probably going to go somewhere else rather than trying to attack a home from this location. Further down, these are existing conditions. You can see the trees growing very thickly already on this section of the rail bed as you approach the Celgene property. And what we would do is make sure that those trees were protected and were not damaged in any way by the trail construction, but then actually go ahead with additional landscaping just to make sure that there are no holes in the landscaping and the buffering that would hurt someone's privacy. At the same time, this would be a very pleasant corridor to walk or bicycle, or just sit and talk with people. Other planting is shown as well. You could even go another step. There's already some sculpture that's going in along parts of the trail in Phase One, having attractive fencing, et cetera, just makes this even more secure and also makes it more attractive. If anyone has questions later, we have about eight or nine slides of other trails where this has been done here in New Jersey, and you can see how it works. This is another, just using a more solid type of fence to make this work. One question that came up is, if it's decided, and it has not, but if it's been, if it's decided that gates should be used at the entrances, the trail is only open during daylight hours. We looked around and saw how this is done elsewhere. My wife and I were on a bike trip up near Poughkeepsie, and of course, that's where the walkway over the Hudson's located, and they put gates in, which do the job, but at the same time, they're really attractive sculpture. The posts for the gates actually mimic some of the architecture of the bridge. So this is one solution. There are also trail gates which simply keep motor vehicles off the trail, but anybody can walk, bicycle, or take their wheelchair around this gate. The gap that you see to the left of that yellow gate is the, meets the ADA requirement for width for the wheelchair to pass through. There's signage such as, you know, to warn people not to ride into the gate, and sometimes there's signage that talks about hours of operation. So with all of this, addressing access, security, et cetera, what you end up with is a trail that will attract people, and people will be doing good things, enjoying themselves. As I say, we have other examples to show this, and this is really the objective. This is really seen in some, not as a trail, it's a park. It's a linear park connecting Summit Green with your parks to the East End, Hidden Valley, et cetera, and doing it in a way that it also happens to include a walking and bicycling trail. Thank you.
Thank you, Bob.
Rob, you have a couple more to close our presentation?
Robert Rubino, Prospect Hill Avenue. Thank you, Bob, for your presentation. Council President, members of council, and the public, and board members of the Parkline Foundation, thank you all for your time and effort here today. Just, you know, in summary, and Council President Nidu gave the recent past, this all started in 2014 while I was a member of the Compton Council, discovering this land and its utility. We had fielded some complaints about, you know, debris along the land, and we really had no opportunity to do anything about it because it was controlled by the state. After several years of diplomacy between the council and the state of New Jersey, we were able to gain access to this land from the state of New Jersey, which is roughly 1.2 miles. It's worth millions of dollars as far as real estate value, and we were able to get the access for free. So, you know, that was probably the biggest hurdle, that political hurdle with the state. So now we- So, now we have this land, which has been fallow for many years, and the notion has always been connections, right? Connect the downtown of Summit to Bryant Park and points in between, and it's both a connection of physical and metaphysical, hopefully connecting neighborhoods and people. I can attest to both. I've met lots of great people, both people who are supporters and people who are not supporters, but still great people and great ideas. Along the way, we've engaged a lot of public groups and individual citizens. We've partnered with Summit Public Art Association. Their first art project is going up. And Phase One was really meant to be a pilot, be a visual and an example to the community of what this may be. And I think we've seen a lot of what it can be. Folks in Denman Place use it as a quick connection to downtown, a safe connection. We've had bikers, joggers using it. We have environmentalists. We created about 80 ounces of Summit Parkline maple syrup this winter. So, that's kind of the notion. This is something that's going to connect the community. We hope what we do here today will be something to be enjoyed for 100 years to come. This meeting is principally about our desire to take the Parkline, which is a park now. In 2016, we passed a resolution, and it's in the master plan, and it's here. It's present. It's about making it better. And this bridge, we see it as the next logical step, and that bridge is about connections, and it's also about safety, because we think it would also offer a safe connection from anybody, from East Summit, or from the downtown for that matter, to walk or bike across Morris Ave without having to negotiate that somewhat concerning pedestrian walkway between Morris Ave and Glenside. So, we really hope to see this bridge as not only amenity, but a true safety improvement for folks, adults and kids alike, from anywhere in Summit, to get to points beyond the downtown and East Summit. So, thank you all for your time, and I want to belabor the point, and hopefully, we'll get some great ideas tonight. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. It's question time from Council. Greg. And I'm going to do this where I'm going to go left, right, left, right, and we'll get through all the council questions, and then the public will have a chance.
Great. Okay. Thank you, Council President. So, good evening, everyone. There's a ton of things that I love about Summit. One of the things that I really love is the way that people are so generous with their time and their money. This project has certainly had a lot of time and money go into it, and I think it has definitely the potential to make Summit a better place. Another part of what I love about Summit is that we really know the power of our voice and the value of our vote, and that's why you'll find on a night in the middle of July, while there's also a concert downtown, all these people packed into this meeting to talk about this, and I think that's just wonderful. So, there are two main responsibilities, the way I see it, of any city government. The first is the safety and health of the residents, and the second is the responsible stewardship of the tax dollars. So, my questions are going to focus on those two things. So, we'll start with the tax dollars. Can someone from the Parkline Foundation give us an estimate of the total all-in cost Phase One, Two, Three of the Parkline?
First of all, my understanding is that the foundation will be paying for this.
I understand, but just so that we're aware.
Right, so there won't be any Summit tax dollars?
Sure.
Right. And then the other thing that I would say is that, having designed several dozen trails of this nature over the last 40-some years, the costs can vary in current dollars from one to one and a half million dollars a mile. That would be with entrances, bridges, benches, improvements, signs, et cetera. What happens if the city decides to move ahead with the project? Then there's a, both a schematic and a final design period that takes place. It's likely that the foundation, in finding money, either through the generous pockets of its members, or through grants that are available, through NJDOT and others, would use grant money. All of those funds require a vigorous, or rigorous, public involvement process. So, before, it would be like you asking me as an architect, which I am, how much would it cost to build a house? Well, is it going to have two bathrooms, three garages? Will it be brick? Will it be stone? All those questions need to be answered for a trail as well. What's the paving? What's the fencing? What's the landscaping? So, the reason there's a range is that putting all those things down, and that's a public process, a process with council, and with the public, with the neighbors, and other stakeholders in the trail, in determining what those things are. And then often, what happens is there are alternates that are looked at, either for cost reasons or for just other desirable reasons. Do we need an entrance here to the aquatic center? Do we need this? Do we need that? Do we want this? Do we not want that? So, that's how that question would be answered. But as I say, the range is typically, where you have an existing rail bed, that makes it a lot easier. But we do have entrances to build. We have a couple bridges to build. Ultimately, so if you take the total mileage, and of course, we're talking about bridging Broad Street and extending the trail up, improving the walkway that's on the north side of Broad Street out to the Summit Green. So, you really have a great tie into this. I mean, I can just see people getting off the train or coming out from dinner, and if it's only a 15 or 20-minute walk home, who wants to sit in that traffic? And the light changes when you could have a really pleasant, safe walk, you know, that's extremely attractive and safe, you would do it. So, that's basically how we start early on, conceptually, looking at an opinion of cost.
Before you go on, Greg, while I appreciate the answer, I'm going to say this. Let's try to be very precise and direct in answering the questions, right? Because otherwise, we're going to be here for a long time.
Certainly.
And I think what we're going to end up is people sitting in the audience getting frustrated, waiting for long answers. So, if the question is about cost, let's answer the question about cost, and we'll move along.
Well, just with all those things in matter, if you're talking about one to 1.5 million a mile, and by the time you're done, you have two to two and a half miles, including ramps and so forth, so that's two and a half times. One and a half is three. You might end up with a figure like 4.5 million on the outside by the time you're done.
Okay. So, in follow-up to that, how much has been raised so far?
We've raised about $400,000 to date, and I agree, 1.5, one to 1.5 would be the total cost.
Okay. And so, just the reason why I'm asking that is just because I don't want us, you know, as a city, to wind up at a point where we're halfway done with something that really should be finished, and, you know, we need to find the rest of the funds. So, that's a little bit of the background for why I'm asking that. So, to switch to the emergency response side, because I don't want to take too much time. So, Kari Fair, the chief of the first aid squad, was also not consulted in this most recent part. So, I just think, moving forward, we need to include all three branches of the emergency response, because they're equally important. And all of those three branches of the emergency response had concerns about the specifics of the accessibility. What kind of vehicles are going to be allowed up there? What are not? What fit? You know, there's, I think, a ton of those questions that we just need a little bit more specifics on, and I know, you know, we probably can't get into every access point here, but if you can give us a general idea, are there going to be variations between ramps, stairs? And where are these access points as they relate to people's houses and property? And do we have permission from them yet? I know that was a lot of questions all at once, so let me know, let me know if you need...
No, I can answer very quickly.
Okay.
Yeah, we can get you an enlargement of the map. You'll see in the, it's hard to see, where it says, "Emergency access points," and they're starred. Right, right. All of the access points and all of the entrances from streets are planned to be ADA accessible and accessible to a 30,000-pound maintenance vehicle, which would include an ambulance or, you know, limited firefighting equipment.
Okay.
And the trail would be designed so that this trail surface is strong enough to carry that.
Okay. And such a vehicle could cross the bridge?
Yes.
Okay.
Jeff. Sorry.
Sure.
Jeff Hankinson, I'm part of the Parkline Foundation. The bridge that would go over Morris, let's start right there, that's a pedestrian bicycle bridge, that's not going to carry a fire engine. So, if you wanted to access an emergency right behind Henry Street, the heavy equipment would come in through the parking lot at the current entrance, and then the fire department currently, I believe, has an ATV, and they'd run right down, and the bridge over Morris would be able to handle the weight of an ATV. At Edgar's Court, where there's a private entrance for the residents to go over to Celgene, there's a double-wide fire department gate. So, the fire department could run in through, right up into Edgar's Court, and they'd be right on the trail. And from there, they'd either have to probably use the ATV again and access back up towards Russell, Ashwood, and Henry Street if it was deemed necessary. And then there's going to be, hopefully, an emergency access spot at Michigan Avenue, the third lot in, which we would be able to bring the heavy equipment in again, up to a point, but not onto the trail. And then you could run down towards Orchard Street.
Let me just make sure I understand. Total number of access points, what is envisioned? How many?
Well, if you're talking about heavy equipment backing up to the trail...
I'm just talking about access points. Let's just start with the...
All those.
10. Okay. How many of them? All of them are going to be ADA compliant?
Yes.
Or are some of them going to be stairs? Or how, all of them want to be ramps? I mean, what are we, are all of them going to be ramps?
It might be difficult at both Ashwood and Russell, because there's high, high...
Exactly. That's what I'm trying to think, yeah.
I don't see an ADA ramp there. It could be a stairway, but it's too high. It's too high of a change there.
Right. Okay. And then, so there's going to be 10 access points, but not all of them are for emergency? Is that what we're, I want to make it clear, right? That's your question, right?
Yes, absolutely. What I'm trying to get at is the feasibility of actually doing all of that emergency response. And I think that, you know, I don't want to speak...
I'd like the chief of police to weigh in on this too, if he wishes to.
Wait, wait, wait. Well, let's just...
Sure.
Yeah, no comment.
Let's remember the rules of the road. I am not going to start off here, Bob, move out. I am not going to have people, as I said, interrupt or talk out of turn. We're not doing that, okay? This is very, very clear, and I'm very, very serious about it. It is, it is not fair to everyone else who respects the process, okay? We're going to do this in a civil discourse. If somebody doesn't want to understand that, cannot understand that, there is the door. That's it. This is my one time I want to speak about that. Okay. Finish.
So, just my wrap-up is that, you know, I think, in order, in order for me to be comfortable, I would think, moving forward, we would need to have at least a joint meeting with all the first responders to talk about the actual feasibility of access points. You know, I think that's the key for emergency response. So, that's it for me. Thank you.
Okay. Toggle over this side. Anybody? Matt?
Thank you, Council President. And so, thank you, Bob, for your presentation, and thank you to the Parkline people for all this volunteer work in trying to help make Summit a better place. I appreciate it, and I appreciate it, Dr. Hankinson, the tour, and I appreciate Larry, Mr. Koskinen, the tour. Thank you. So, since there are so many of us, I have a lot of questions, as you would expect, but I want to focus on a couple things, which is, I guess, what I see as a heavy lift to get this project, you know, I see a heavy lift in front of us, I guess. The access points that are, so, my first question's about quantitative studies. Have we done any quantitative studies of, or could we do any quantitative studies of how many houses are directly affected by the trail? Like, it backs up to their houses? And of those houses, of those residents, how many are in favor of it and how many are against it? I think to when we put speed humps in on Woodland and Ashland, we sent surveys out to all the residents, and they responded, and then we could have a percentage of what people were in favor of it and what were not. Has any of that been done?
I don't know the exact number. It's a simple answer to that. We have spoken at one point or another to most of the residents on Henry Street and in the surrounding areas, but I can't tell you exactly how many have responded. To your first question, there are about eight or 10 houses along Henry Street, and there are a couple of houses on Edgar's Court that literally front the Parkline, and that's the areas we, when we showed the screening, that was those two specifications.
Right. Okay, so there's only 10 houses that back up directly onto this trail in any of the phases?
Approximately, yes.
Roughly?
Yeah, roughly.
Okay. And how many residents, so my other quantitative question would be, how many residents would this trail serve? I mean, how many, let me back up. The access point now for Phase One is on private property, correct? It's on Overlook property? And the other access point is, where do you get the other access point? I've walked along it, but I've tried to figure out how to get on the trail.
There are two places. The primary access, and one you're referring to, of course, is at the beginning of Phase One, adjacent to the Overlook property. The only other access point would be at the far end at Orchard Street, which is really, we have not developed that at all. That's sort of walking uphill. So, there is only one access point to the trail at this point.
Right. Okay, that's what I thought. You get to the one end, you got to turn around and come back.
And you turn around and come back, and that's why the Morris Ave Bridge is important. Oh, I'm sorry. Yes, I, wow, that was a big mistake. As you walk to the end of the first phase, there is the trail that goes up through the woods to Upper Overlook Road. That would be the other access point, Upper Overlook Road. So, if you were coming down Morris Avenue, if you made the left just after the hospital, you've probably seen the sign we have up there, Summit Parkline. So, you can access it there. That also is property owned by Overlook or Atlantic Health.
Right. Okay.
So, there are two access points.
Thank you, thank you.
I tend to think of that as one trail. Sorry.
No, I understand. But both of them are on private property right now. And of the 10 access points that you see along the whole trail, does the city own any of them, or how many of them are on private property right now?
Those would be envisioned to be with, sorry, I'll step up.
Just stay there. Until somebody else wants to take your place, you're it.
That's fine. That's fine.
Jay, they're all on the right-of-way.
Yes, thank you. That's right, I was about, the right-of-way is, in some places 50, in some places 60 feet wide, which, with a 10-foot trail, is, allows enough space to have a stairway or a ramp down onto the public street, Ashwood, or Russell, or Morris. So, none of the other access points, none, would be in private property.
Okay. But they would all require, is it eminent domain where we take people's property and...
Nobody's, it would be the city's right-of-way. We have a right-of-way.
We already have the right-of-way.
Right, you have the right-of-way. Let me just clarify one thing, again, sorry to make it more complicated. As you know, the trail currently runs through the Celgene property.
Right.
Depending on the exact location of the access point, it's possible that one or more of those, depending on, again, what Chief Wack and Chief Evers think are the most appropriate locations, they have already agreed, and as you've probably seen, they have devised a plan for their portion of the property, a detailed plan that I think nearly everyone here has already seen. So, access would be from that, to answer your question, of private property. It would only be the Celgene property. All the others would be in, again, the right-of-way and/or public streets.
Right. Okay. And then, parking is my other question, so...
Jeff, you want to talk about parking?
You know, we have a dearth of parking, as Rita McNanny cites, of 350 spots for Summit that we've been talking about for years and trying to solve.
Doug is highlighting over here on the left, he's circling it, the exit, or the entrance number one, there's a possibility, with Union County's permission, we could build a parking lot right at that location. There's an old substation there, appropriate, there's already a little gravel road into that caged area, and we could probably get 15 cars in there. And then, let's go to the, yeah, the pool. The pool is very proximal, a very large parking lot, a couple hundred spots there. And you can just exit the pool parking lot, get on a little side street, and boom, you're right down to Michigan Avenue, and you enter there. There's going to be access all through Hidden Valley. You know... You know, if you're in Hidden Valley Park, you're going to be able to work your way over the Parkline, just connecting trails in the woods. Can we go to slide number nine? This is the, the Italian American Club, which is being developed for Habitat for the Humanities. If this lot to the left becomes available, Parkline Foundation would entertain the potential to buy it, work with the, the community, and see how to best develop it. And one of our ramps would be coming right off of that parking lot, possibly. Then parking, eventually, if we redevelop Broad Street, we could pick up some parking there, either parallel or slant parking. I envision slant parking as a possibility there. But that's, that's down the road. That would probably be done around the same time you put a bridge in there, too.
Okay. Okay, one last question then. Is there any reason why Phase Three couldn't be done first and Phase Two be done after we see if that's successful?
Well, it can be done separately. That's why they're broken up. It doesn't matter which way it goes.
Okay. Thank you.
Jeff, just to, just, just, let's be, on the access point from the pool side, that would, on Michigan Avenue, that would have to go through Celgene property, correct?
Yes, and they've agreed to do it.
And so that has to still negotiated with Celgene.
Negotiated, and then also they have to get city permission, you know, to, to develop that property.
Right. Right. Just so we, so people are clear, right?
Yes, right.
It's not necessarily that it's, it's, it's a potential access point, but that has, unless I'm wrong, and you guys can correct me, but my understanding of it, it's a potential access point, but there's a couple of steps there that would need to be done in order to get there.
That, that's what I'm, I guess, just to, that's what I'm trying to understand, is all the access points, nowhere does it just come straight off the street and go to the Parkline, right? You have to go through someone's yard to get there.
No, I, no.
No? Please explain it to me then, because I don't understand it.
At the locations where, excuse me, at the locations where the railroad bid, where the railroad went over the street, right? What you do is, you're down at the street, the railroad's up here, and you just dig a shelf into the side of the embankment at, at an ADA grade until you get to the trail.
Right. So what's one location where that would happen?
Morris Avenue...
And what?
The other two streets.
Morris and...
The bridge guard.
If we build a bridge. Right. If we don't build a bridge...
Well, they still need an access point, right? They still need access points.
Yeah, but if you don't build a bridge, then you don't have a safe crossing there.
Right.
Right.
You can still put it in access point from that side, but you won't be across Morris Avenue.
Right. Okay, thank you.
Yeah, Russell Place, I mean, there, again, there's a bridge, you have a wide right-of-way, 60 feet, trails 10 or 12, you have the embank, you can just grade up into the embankment and get your...
Right.
And that can occur at each of those locations. That's how we've done it many times.
Okay.
And if privacy is a concern on, on or both sides, as you grade up, you can do your plantings along there, it works fine.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Okay, this side. Marjorie?
Thank you, Council President. I'm going to second my colleagues' thank yous, just in the interest of time. I have two major areas of concern. One is security, particularly to the homeowners that are affected by this, by the location of the trail, and then also maintenance costs. And I've, I've been out to the site with, with Jeff Hankinson and, and with Larry Koskinen as well, so I've, I think I've walked most parts of the site. And I guess, one thing that I'm concerned with is, we're still speaking in generalities here. And Bob has mentioned that we, you know, that the next step is the schematic design. And I'm wondering why we are being asked to make a decision on moving forward with the bridge, with the bridge engineering, before we see that schematic design and have that conversation about what the measures really are, what the, you know, for security, what the maintenance costs are going to be. It's all very, it depends on what we choose as options. So there's a lot of, there are a lot of moving parts here that, that are very hard for us to, to ask about and to understand without having that more, the more detailed schematic. And I, I guess I'm wondering if there's a reason behind this, because to me, I think it's backwards, and we ought to have the schematic first.
With regard to security, Councilwoman Fox, we have had, and will continue to have discussions with Chief Weck. Clearly, we are not security access.
Right. And I have questions about that, too. I mean, I'll, I can, I'll touch on those questions after, but this is sort of just the big global, why, why now? Why are we talking...
Because, because as it relates to security, the way we will achieve that on this project is by providing screening that we showed, whether it's a combination of fencing and planning. That's, that is, that combined with, of course, the effective work of our police department, which clearly we're not here to question tonight, is how security will be achieved. It will be achieved by what they believe is necessary to achieve that. If gates are appropriate, I don't think, like our other parks, we should have gates. But if, in fact, that's the wish of council, and that's why we showed that. We, we wanted to show our plan, which we did. We also included an example of gates. Clearly, you recognize there are many different ways of showing gates. But that was a recognition on our part, that if, if gates are deemed advisable, so be it. It will, it will be done. As far as that goes, that's the extent of the planning as it relates to security. It's, we have provided, I think the great concern is privacy. And I think you've seen, we've provided the privacy that's appropriate. I'm not sure there's more with regard to security.
Well, but as far as the access for fire and police and emergency, that's also falls under security in my mind. And, you know, knowing what the access points are and how you would get to them, it sounds like even amongst your group, there is some, some, not, not an agreement about what is accessible, what a fire truck could get over, what an ATV could get over. These are the kind of things that before we start talking about building a bridge, I think we need to understand sort of where all those pieces are.
Well, I, I just accept that, if that's, that's your point of view.
Okay.
I just see it.
But I mean, could you explain to me what the logic is for doing the bridge now and the, and the schematic plan after we talk about the bridge?
Choice of the term schematic plan is perhaps what's causing maybe the, the difficulty here. Let me, let me try it that way. The, the bridge will over, then, if, if we proceed. Remember, what we're talking about here is getting, having a design and an engineering study done for that. We're not, we're not suggesting in any way that we're about to build a bridge. What we're suggesting is we would like to engage with a firm who will do the design for us, because that's complicated. We have to, the bridge will have to be taller than it is, et cetera. So what we want to do is get started on that. That will take, they, Mont McDonald has told me it'll take him 60 days to do the engineering. I hope so. You know, it's a reasonable number. We want to get started on that. Then, we'll have a contractor, and then we would enter into a contract, hopefully, assuming everyone is on board, to do that. That merely gets us across Morris Avenue. That's all that, that's an important step in this development, though. I think with regard to whether the access is at Russell Place, or the access is at Ashwood, you know, those streets are very close together. That is not something that, in my opinion, needs to be determined today. We're going to get across Morris Avenue, it'll be, and it'll be gated right there. That'll be as far as it goes. Then we're going to proceed to continue along the path as necessary.
I guess my concern is, this is a fait accompli if we put the bridge across Morris Avenue. If we don't think that we can adequately provide for access, and that we, you know, that we address the maintenance concerns, and we address the access for emergency responders, all of those pieces, I think the community has raised a lot of questions, a lot of us on council have similar questions. And I'm not eager to put a bridge across Morris Avenue, or to even move down that path if I don't think that we can answer those other questions. And I would make a plea, first of all, that we, that we go further with the schematic, because, I mean, what you're telling us is Mont McDonald will take 60 days to do a plan. That's not that much time. A schematic might take more than that. But I would like to see more detail about, you know, what is a grade going to look like on that abutment? That's going to be very hard to get a grade that's ADA accessible. I was just out there.
Right.
And it's going to, I, I'm not convinced it can be done. And I guess my point is, you know, rather than being, some people are saying it can be, some people are saying it can't be, I want to see a plan, and before I, before I make any decisions about a bridge. So that's, that's my thinking on that. But did, did you have a...
I think those details could be easily provided. Let me just say, the term schematic plan is a technical term in getting, you know, your DOT funding, right? It's typically 15% of the construction cost to do all the survey, environmental, review, all the things that are required in the transportation process. This is a transportation project. So we're not talking about just a couple sketches of one thing. We're talking about, you know, a mile or two of survey, wetlands analysis, endangered species, and all of these things go in. I would say that, yes, if you put the bridge in, the concerns that are there are, you know, do you want to carry, you know, an ATV type of vehicle if you want something heavier? I think we showed two slides of a bridge. We showed a steel bridge, which is much heavier, and that's often used in a more remote location where that's the only access. So we could do the lighter bridge in terms of costs and whatnot, because there are other entrances available. But I do see what you're saying, and we could certainly go over a list with you and easily provide that information.
That would be very helpful.
And other people, yeah.
Before we move forward, I, I was hoping that tonight would be the night where we would actually see what an access ramp would look like, or what a staircase would look like, and where each of those would go, instead of just little stars on a map. And that's, because I think, you know, once we start getting into engaging an engineer and talking about putting a bridge there, we've, we've gotten the card...
We brought other slides of other trails.
Okay. But other trails don't, I want to see it on this, you know, I want, I want to see what it would look like on this, you know?
Well, we have the identical situation, where the railroad bridge is going over a road, it's on an embankment, and we have an ADA-approved grade, which will...
Why don't we see the slide?
Yeah, sure.
Yeah.
It gives you some impression, so let's see.
Sure, let's see.
We didn't want to bore you with a hour-long presentation, but we did bring...
Okay.
And that is slide number... It's the Radnor one.
I hear some additional...
Is that the one you want? Is what you want, Bob?
No.
This one?
Yep.
The ramp up to the bridge.
It's, it was privacy with the Radnor Trail with the ramp coming up. I'm sorry, I have them all here numbered, and I, I just don't see. Yes, that's it. Good. This is very much likely a bridge to go over Morris Avenue. You have a street here, there's a railroad bridge, it has a hike there, it's over the street. This is a big embankment, and this is where this ramp, which gives access for pedestrians and bicycles from the walkway down here, also a virtually gate, gives access to police, to, not a full fire engine, because this is a 10-foot wide trail, it's not a 12-foot wide roadway, but the extra supplemental vehicles that they have, the ATV or whatever, they can go in, or whatever. So this, this is way up above the street, and this is where this is put in here. And this is a wide right-of-way also. There's no eminent domain or acquisition of property. We're able to use the rest of the property to put a ramp in. And there are five of these, and this is two, two mile long trail. So we're looking at a very similar approach at these entrances that we've shown in this white, which is on the park.
Okay. Thank you. I had more questions. Did you want about that?
Yeah, about that. So looking at this real quick, is that access trail there 20 yards, 30 yards long? I mean...
Oh, no, it's, it's about 200 feet long.
200 feet?
That's because it's meeting ADA, and it has to climb all the way up.
Okay, so about 60 yards, yeah? 60 yards?
Yeah. Yeah. Basically, yeah, exactly.
Okay.
Do you want to finish off your question?
Yes, please.
Also, maybe for the people using it, it's not hard to walk or bicycle up that ramp.
So what are the ADA accessibility requirements? Are, you, you said that, you said that all the trails would be accessible, but then there's been some discussion about stairs on some of these?
Yeah, I think this is, it's this situation here, which is also Morris Avenue.
Okay, so you're not anticipating any stairs? It's going to be all ramps like that?
The ADA requirements for trails, there's a special manual for that. And I'm quite expert in that. I chaired the accessibility board for the City of Philadelphia for 10 years. So I had a lot to do, and also we included in our design. Understanding a trail such as the hiking trail portion of the existing South Parkline climbs up the hill, there are steps, there are rocks, it's not really achievable for researchers. So the, the general rule is that you make things meet the ADA grades, we're readily achievable. This was an example where, you know, if there's steps in, suppose there wasn't an uprightway, there were buildings right up next to this, and you'd say it wasn't readily achievable. This was a readily achievable solution, cutting into the embankment. And it's a, it's a solution we've used many times now. So just in our walk over the whole right-of-way from Ryan Park, where we down to the green, this would seem to be an approach that would work.
Okay, thanks.
Excuse me, can you turn the microphone? Does the people at home, will people hear?
Certainly.
Good point.
Thank you, thank you.
What about, what are the best practices about closing trails at dark versus providing lighting? Or even if you don't close, even if you do close the trails at, at dark, is it advisable to have lighting on the trails?
Lighting is, I would say this, if you're going to see use on the trail, or you're going to encourage people, I think one of the things that was mentioned to us was, part of the reason for doing this trail is to encourage people to walk and bicycle. It's good for their health, it reduces traffic ingestion, which we've all experienced here in Summit. And so then the question becomes, all right, I have a job, which is supposedly nine to five, but actually usually goes from eight to seven. When I leave work, other than in the deep summer like now, it's dark. I ride my bicycle to work every day. So the trails that I take from Center City, Philadelphia, out to the historic district near the University of Pennsylvania where I live, have lighting. And there are many people walking to the Amtrak station, they're coming home, they're out for a walk, they're walking their dog, they're pushing a baby carriage in the evening. So lighting, you know, in that case, makes a lot of sense. The other thing that I've seen is, is that there's a lot of concern, if a trail is open after dusk, you know, what's going to happen there? There'll be parties and other things that are not desirable. My wife and I did a trip to Block Island. We took the train to Providence, and we followed the East Bay Bicycle Trail down to Bristol, and then took a ferry to, to Block. That trail has signs, and it says commuter use only, dusk to dawn. They recognized that there were people who had restaurant jobs. They finished their, their shift at 11 o'clock, and they had to get home, and it was only a half an hour bike ride, and if they were told to ride on the interstate highway, which is the only other choice, it didn't make sense. So what they had was a rule that if, if the patrol, people who are patrolling see you sitting there, they say, I'm sorry, no picnicking, you know, no stopping, this is commuter use only. So that was one strategy that worked very well. Because the other, the other thing I feel is that I had to get my mother when she was alive. We have a, the only bridge...
Bob, Bob, let's, let's cut that.
Enough, okay.
Now, just, what are the best practices, I guess, is...
I, I think, Marjorie, his answer to his question was...
Is you could do either.
Either.
Yeah, okay.
Let's move on.
Thank you. I'll, I'll watch the stories.
All right. What about, what about snow removal, leaf removal? What kind of maintenance are you anticipating this trail is going to need?
That's a choice. Because some park authorities plow their trails, particularly where there's a population that would be using the trail to go in town here. Others do not. It's simply a matter of what's, what's their policy on, on trail and sidewalk maintenance and so forth.
Okay, yeah. I am, because I am very concerned about the costs of this, of the maintenance of this project. I mean, we're talking plowing, we're talking leaf removal?
But let's ask questions. So the question is-
The question, so the question is, we're talking about a lot of ongoing maintenance costs. And I would rec, I would suggest that there ought to be an endowment, like what the High Line has in New York, to provide funding for these things. You know, we, we are very conscious of our headcount in Summit in terms of our employees, but we're asking them to do more things. And, you know, we're talking about police also patrolling. So the question is, is there some way of creating an endowment to ensure that there's money for ongoing maintenance, and also for replacement if bushes die, if fences fall down, whatever, you know, to make sure that the taxpayer isn't left holding the bag?
Through you, Council President. The memorandum of understanding that the city signed on to last year, it was clear that maintenance would be responsibility, and the planning of the maintenance would be the responsibility of the city. Kind of the theory being, the Park Line, you know, secured the land from the state. We're funding construction. We thought it was equitable that if we're going to gift a park to the city, that the city would sign on for the maintenance. Paul Cascase, Chief Eversen Weck have all come to the dais and said it would not be an additional headcount to maintain it. So we would expect from the Park Line to actually get a plan from the city as to how they would want to maintain it. As it relates to trails, and we've been doing a lot of the maintenance anyway as volunteers, although it is technically the responsibility of the city, you know, the knotweed that's been overgrowing, we've been up there, lots of volunteers have been keeping it in check. But we would look to the city for their end of the agreement with the MOU to continue with maintenance. But my understanding from the professionals that it would not engender any increased headcount.
Are we good?
I'm not sure that I agree with this. It might not engender headcount, but there are certainly other demands on city staff's time. And that's, that's what I am concerned about, you know, whether this is really the top priority of what we need city staff to be accomplishing and stretching them too thin.
But as a governing body, you've already agreed to that, and based, I guess, on the council of your paid professionals, that it would not be onerous to, in exchange for a free new park, I guess.
Council President, could, I just suggest maybe Mr. Cascase speak to that?
Well, why don't we do this? Why don't we get through the questions?
But that is, that would answer Ms. Fox's question.
Paul, if you want to address, maybe you can address the specific question of what the estimated cost will be long-term or annually, let's say, for maintaining it. And I think one of the, just to make a finer point of it, there, there were suggestions that it would be optional for us as far as whether we wanted to remove snow or not remove snow. What is your thoughts on that? And then the maintenance cost?
Sure. Thank you, Council President. So I did a preliminary cost analysis of just general maintenance of the Park Line, the total length, if it was improved, the total length of the Park Line. And just very general-
And speak up, Paul, please.
Sure. Not including snow removal, or any type of emergency response for storm removal. It's about $10,800 a year. And how I came up with that, I, I broke it down into several areas. One is maintaining the walking surface, whatever that may be, on a weekly basis, clearing vegetation along the Park Line route, for it not to interfere with either bicycles or pedestrians walking on it. And trash removal at, you know, locations, specific locations where we'll have trash and recycling containers. So they all equated to about $300 a month at about $10,800. And as I stated, that is a very general type maintenance program. And it's basically three-season, does not include the winter months.
Snow. How does that compare to other parks that we maintain?
Well, we typically, in some other parks that we do maintain, if it's not the Village Green, one that, we get a lot of pedestrian activity.
Let's say Tatlock, let's say Memorial Field, take another park.
Very similar.
Thank you. Okay. On this side?
Thanks, Paul.
Anybody have a question on this side? Beth?
No.
Matt? Mike?
Beth, you go. Ladies first.
If you want to go, Mike, it does, we don't have to be, we can go. One of you, I can go.
We've all done, it's been a party-centric, so why don't you go first?
What's center?
Party-centric.
Mike, you go. Go, come on, let's just move it along. Yeah, I guess one of my questions
was, I was a little confused about, we started talking about fire trucks and ATVs. I just want to be very clear. The access points as envisioned with, where there will be ramps, those will be able to accommodate a police squad car and an ambulance? Okay. So if there's a major fire up there, that's what you were talking about, having issues with maybe getting a big massive fire rig up there. Right? So we're, so we're, so we're not talking about this ability to shuffle things around on an ATV for, for police and, and emergency, like first aid responders, they could use their existing equipment to access the Park Line?
Yes.
Perfect. Okay. I was confused.
Can I just follow up on this? I just want to make, because I'm, I'm confused about that. Because I had thought there are areas of the Park Line, especially behind Henry Street, even on Edgar's Court, that are, I would not think, just visually, I'm not an engineer, do not seem wide enough to hold the wheelbase of a fire truck or ambulance. Okay.
We're not building a 20-foot roadway.
But, but an ambulance differs from a fire truck. I just want to be clear about that.
Yes.
So it can hold an ambulance-
Yes.
And a police cruiser, but not a full-blown fire truck.
Right. And a pickup truck, not a triaxle, but a pickup truck, that, that level of vehicle.
Okay. I, I, just visually, it doesn't look like it can, to be honest. So I'm surprised. But you, you guys must have done some measurements, yes?
Yeah.
Keith, do you want to, or do, does somebody want to come up and make clear this point?
But to be clear, the city currently is responsible for anything that might occur up there.
Agreed. Agreed.
And Chief Weck and Evers have come up and addressed that point, because it could happen tonight, you know. So I, I think if we want to direct any further questions to them, that might be useful.
I, I think maybe, maybe Chief, you want to come up, or both chiefs want to come up and speak to this issue. Because let's just very precise here about what type of equipment can actually go on to the length of this 1.2, 1.2, 1.4-mile park?
So I'll, I'll, I'll address the question. It's probably a very remote chance, or probably not even feasible, to have a full-blown fire truck on the High Line, on that rail. It's really more for support vehicles, access to shuttle equipment back and forth, maybe an ambulance and a pickup truck, that kind of apparatus may at some point access the line. But a fire truck, we wouldn't have something up there. It's more so getting something up there, having access points, you get equipment back and forth, showing that that's happened up there. Then have some access points along some parts of Henry Street, or between Ashwood, we can get equipment up there. Guys get up there either by ramp or by stairs to get to the rail. That's really what we're looking for veracis-wise, not for a full-blown fire truck to be up there driving back and forth.
So it's a pickup truck or-
So, so to be clear, so from the plan as you've seen it, the access points that you've seen from your perspective seem adequate for what you think the potential scenarios might be that you, your guys might get involved?
Yep. And the foundation supplied us with, I think it was back in late August of 18, we gave, I think it was seven bullet points of what we think we would need operationally-wise, us and the PD. And so probably a lot of the access points are probably on our recommendations, where we want to see them strategically placed along the trail. That's probably why they come up with those, you know, with those points.
Great. Okay. And Chief, how about you?
I'm not going to try to counter his. So two things. We've had instances in parking garages up on the railroad tracks. We're going to get where we have to get. That's, it is what it is, right? So the only thing is, I do want to see another access, and that was in my, my bullet to them, is from, what is that, two to three? That's a long stretch with no access points. I do want to see one either behind Selgin or come down Michigan. Doesn't have to be one for individuals, even if it's just for, for emergency services, that we can get a little closer. Because if we went in on the second from the left and had a run or whatever, that's a pretty long way. If it was, you know, right in the middle, I'd like to see one more in there. And I mentioned that to Jeff and into my comments to the city clerk, which was fun on the back.
Okay. So you're, you're saying that you, in that phase two to three, you, you'd like something, maybe working with Selgin somewhere?
Even if it's just for the police and fire ambulance. And then the other thing, I think we need to stop talking about the ATV. I think the both chiefs, because it was mentioned that we'll get the ATV. All I care about is my officers can get to a point, get out with a medical bag or what have you, and run to the point and do whatever they have to do. We're not going to the fire department, getting the ATV, then driving to an access point. So because that, that, I think, I've heard that enough. An ATV would be for a long-term incident where we had to bring out where there was a crime scene, and that we could do that.
Right. And that's why I asked the question. I wanted to differentiate, like, real access, where you get an emergency call, you can get there as quickly as possible through a car.
I will say my officers are officers, are in great shape. They'll be able to get to wherever we need to go. Thank you, Keith.
Thank you. Okay, okay. Then another question I had was, and I guess this goes to Councilwoman Fox's thing, when, I think what she was talking about, part of the schematics was the screening issues, or screening for residencies. Because I completely agree, you know, there are homes here that will be affected with, literally in their backyard. So it's very, very important that we're very specific and address any of those concerns as clearly as we can. I did, from the slides that I saw, with, with the, it seems to me that you were talking about several options with vegetation, fence, or, or the third option would be some combination of the two. I guess my question is, what, what type of input would residents have in your envisioning around that? I mean, I know this would be something that council would, would have. But when, when you've designed these things in the past, how flexible is a design plan to accommodate either individual wishes from a property that abuts the Park Line, or perhaps a neighborhood?
Okay. The answer is that we typically have met with individual property owners along the way, recognizing when you go down a typical street in Summit down the street, one person has a fence, another has a wall, you know, people have different desires. So on the very similar trail that we showed, there were four options offered: a wire fence, a split rail fence, a board fence, or no fence, in addition to landscaping. The other sub-option that was offered was, did the owner want the fence to be gate-ready? Right? If you have a board fence that goes all the way down, if, if I lived in a house, I would like to have my own entrance to the trail. So that was allowed. So people would have a stair up to the trail, have a door in the, in the fence. So all those options would be offered so that, because some people like, they like birds and they want the sky open where they are, and all that would be looked at. So we typically offer a variety of options.
Okay, great. Thank you. And then, I guess, finally, this is, as everyone mentioned, this is a linear park. So while it's a little different than the other parks that we have in town, it's still a park. And I guess one of my concerns would be, are we being consistent as we look at this versus how we think about our other parks? And, and so that, that would be something I would want to consider around lighting, per se. Paul, you, Paul or Chief Weck, you might be able to answer this. We don't specifically light right now parts of like Memorial Field, do we? You know, that part that goes behind the, you know, near Cornhog, that's kind of a pathway to the tennis courts? Or do we? I don't even know. Council President, no, we don't. We don't. The only lights that we have on illumination at night are for the tennis courts. And they go off at 10 o'clock. Okay. But no other lighting in any parks. Gotcha. And then, from a, from a screening perspective, this is probably more for Bob, the way lights, if, if it's envisioned that that's a good thing for this, the way the screening works, because clearly it can't happen where there are going to be lights shining in people's backyards at night, is that, are there lighting options that work around being very localized?
Yeah, see the, the second one?
Right to the mic.
Yeah.
I'm sorry. See the second one where the lights are down at ground level?
Okay.
When you're walking or biking, you need the ground illuminated. You don't need the whole rest of the world lit up. So that, that's one solution that works. And if you have your buffering and your planting, you won't even see that lighting if it's directed only onto the pavement.
Okay, great. Thank you. Thank you, Mike. Steve, do you have a question?
I, I got a couple of questions. Thank you. And I appreciate all the council people taking some of the good questions away. And, but a follow-up on Councilman McTernan's fencing question. Where you offer four different options, I got to tell you, I'd want one consistent option along the whole trail for security purposes. Because if someone has a split rail on one house, and then a stockade fence, and then split rail, they can just jump the split rail, correct? Is that normally how they do it? Or do you have like a more consistent low in a block?
It varies. But there are people who would feel very strongly about having an eight-foot-high solid barrier right behind their house. You can do, for security, we showed fencing that was wire. It can be very strong, so that it's providing, you know, you can have some visual openness if you want. But I think the issue, if you want only one type or whatever, that's something that you would have to resolve.
And, and now going to the best practices that Councilwoman Fox talked about. And it's relating to parking. Surprise, surprise. We have a very landlocked, you know, trail. This trail is going to be pretty much maintained and just within Summit. Do you have like numbers, when you build a building, you sit there and say 1.5 parking spots per room or whatever? Do you have any kind of best practices that talks about parking per mile or for usage or anything to that effect?
It's more of an art. No, I don't. And, and there are no such numbers. There are guidelines of having a trailhead approximately every one to two miles. So if we had a trailhead at Broad Street, right, and then one out at Bryant Park, that would meet that, that guideline. But the reason it's a guideline is it makes a big difference that you have, part of the trail has homes along it, other part, there's just Selgin, they have plenty of parking for their own, they don't need it for their people. You have parking of some nature, whether it's on-street or other at Bryant Park. So what you do is, you look at, you can do an estimate following certain guidelines of how many people you would expect to come. But also, it's a big difference if this is a trail, say, in the Delaware Water Gap, where most of the people coming are coming from a distance, then they'll be taking either the bus or whatever. In this case, many of the people using the trail, because it serves their community, or it serves their downtown, will simply be getting, going out of their home and walking or bicycling a couple blocks or one block and getting on the trail. They, they won't need to have a parking area. This is a local trail.
And that, that leads to the great, the next question, maybe this is for current usages. You know, we are trying to keep it, you know, specifically for the Summit residents. Currently, do we see many residents coming, or many users coming from outside of Summit to our current usage? Or do we have any numbers that show what the usage is as well as current Summit residents versus non-residents?
I think the answer is there's no.
I can see the shaking heads.
Fine, Rob. I think the answer is no.
You're Council President? No, that's not calculated. It seems to be the denizens of the neighborhood.
Okay.
I can give you an anecdotal answer. For the past, for the past few years, I've gone to Selgin's Earth Day event as, as a representative of the Park Line. And I would say at least half of the people who wandered by the table and we chatted with liked the idea because they said, gee, I could walk downtown in 10 minutes at lunchtime. Not every day, they're working hard. But you know my point. My point is, those, that was a large enough sample that I think it's worth repeating, that they would use it because it would be far easier to walk from Selgin to Starbucks or anywhere else in downtown. I think, I do not think there would be many people who would drive to there. I think people will use it as a way of getting from one place to another, that they currently drive. I think would actually reduce parking.
So we'd include-
It's an opinion, but it's based on primarily that, those specific conversations with Selgin employees who were curious about it.
Thank you.
In your, very quickly, in your trail planning manuals, a short trail like this is not typical of one that attracts people from a great distance. If you live in Marstown, you're going to go over to the- If you live in Marstown, you're going to go over to the Liberty Water Gap Trail and do something, the Patriot Path, that gives you some distance. But for people who live here, the ability to walk to, walk into town, have lunch, and come back, people will do that. It will bring, it will bring business.
Okay. Beth, you're up, you're last.
Thank you. It's hard to go last, but. I, too, want to thank everyone involved who's worked so hard on this. This is obviously, everyone's looking to the best interest of everyone in Summit, and I do appreciate that. As the other council members, I think all of us have expressed, I think the main issue is the area of the trail that goes in through the residential areas. We're all concerned about the safety and security in that issue, and then the cost to the city, because we, you know, that's one big part of our job, is to balance needs and wants, and, you know, I think it's Nora or Jordan, or somebody said, you know, you can do anything, but you can't do everything. So, that's one thing that we need to really evaluate, so my questions are going to be along those lines as well. And I do echo Councilwoman Fox's concerns. A lot of the things that you said, that, that, you know, are, you know, you said in this next phase of the plan, that, you know, it's 10%, or around 10% of construction cost, whatever, to develop specific plans that look at grade, look at plants, look at all these different things, but to me, that's, those seem to be really, really important questions that need to be asked, that is this going to be feasible? What are the costs going to be to complete this, this trail? What are the impacts to the neighborhoods? The grade of the trail, the width of the trail that's possible in areas, the vegetation, the different things that go on, that, that speaks very directly to the feasibility of doing, and completing the trail. And I don't want us to be in a position where we've built a bridge to nowhere, and I don't want to go forward with the bridge, and the engineering of the bridge, if we haven't determined that the rest of the trail makes sense, and that we've addressed all the concerns of people in the neighborhood, and the people in the city, of what are the costs going forward? What are the maintenance that we're going to be dealing with? What are, what, what is this exactly going to look like? I think it's very difficult for me, as a councilperson, to look and evaluate all these different options for screening and fencing and different things, and say, how are these going to impact the residents of the neighborhood? And I'm sure the residents are thinking the same thing. And I've heard that these concerns can be easily answered, and they can be easily addressed, but that's what the public meeting was for, that's what this meeting is for, and then we're still hearing that there's things that, you know, will be addressed at a later date. And I think it's really hard to evaluate this without knowing those things first. And I, I would echo Councilwoman Fox's opinion that a lot, you know, I would, I think some of these things with access point, grade, where exactly it's going to be, how wide it's exactly going to be, if we put this fencing up on, you know, do we do it on both sides? And how wide does that make the trail? All these things need to be looked at before we look at building a bridge. Because once we build that bridge, really, and I feel the people in the neighborhood are probably nodding their heads at this, once the bridge is built, it's, you know, we're done, and it's going forward. And there, you know, these concerns may not be addressed properly at that point. So, I would like to see a lot of those things addressed before. Has there been any attempt to do any mockups of these fencing options, so that the people in the neighborhood can see how it would look from their residences, and how it would look on the trail itself, once the fencing is up? Have we done any mockups, even with cardboard, or anything else, to show the height, and to let the residents see what, you know? If I was a resident, I would like to see a mockup, to see if the fence is up and it's in this height, can you see into my bedroom? Can you see into my backyard? Has that been done, or thought about?
Are you council president? We'd be happy to do that. One of, one of the concerns was, if it's more of a hardware, wooden fence, you know, you put it up, vegetation would have to, if we put up vegetation only, that would have to be maintained by the city. So, you don't want to put it up and then, you know, leave it to grow fallow. So, it's perfectly reasonable to do, and if there's any homeowner that would want that, the foundation would be happy to provide the funding and the, and the mockup, you know, kind of, almost like a model home scenario, like we did with Phase 1, which is really, and I encourage folks in the public who've never been to Phase 1, to go there to get a, a look and feel of what it may be. There's now, I think, three or four park benches up there, there's new vegetation up there, screening for those neighbors, but the foundation would be willing to support that kind of test drive, if you will, to give folks a feeling of what their, how their privacy may be protected. One or two yards, it's fine.
Yeah, I've, because I've walked Phase 1 as well, and that's, that's, you know, a very different story than what we're talking about in Phase 2, where I've also been up there. And it seems quite narrow to me, so I was trying to envision what it would feel like and look like with fencing on both sides, and what that would look like. I think it'd be helpful to do a mockup, and I think that then, you know, the residents may feel more comfortable if that's done.
The fencing, I think, from the, the schematics we saw, would really be on the side facing the yards, and leave just the vegetation, which really doesn't, on the, on the other side, on any housing at the moment, it's an empty, empty lot. But that, again, if, if the city were to decide that they would want to see fencing on both sides, the park line would be, the foundation would be supportive of that.
Wouldn't it be correct that the other side looks down into Ashwood Court and the new development, that is, the habitat, the housing down to Ashwood Court?
In its current iteration, where there would be, if there would be, you know, obviously privacy, privacy issues, we would, but when you walk up there, the first several hundred yards is that empty lot.
Well, I could see into the yards on Ashwood Court when I was up there.
Wherever there's a privacy issue, we'd be happy to put up a screening.
Right. And I, you know, we've talked about, the, the town is responsible for emergency access to what it is now, but clearly, that is a different story, that when there is fencing and screening, that limits the, that limits the access. So, my question to Chief Evers and Chief Weck, is, has, is the similar question to Paul Castcase, he's estimated the cost would be approximately $10,800 per year to maintain. Have you looked at what the extra cost in patrolling a park of this size would be per year? And have we looked at any trails of this size, like what the emergency costs typically are for a trail of this size?
For the police, it's one-stop shopping. Anything that's in the six square miles of Summit, we're going to patrol. I also talked to Chief Debbie of the Union County Police Department, because we send so much money to the county, and it's technically a park.
Here, here.
Right? So, he said that he would also look to patrol it. So, that's, you know, they're trying to justify why they're there, so I'm sure that he's going to, he's going, I do say that with respect, they do a great job, but I know that they're looking to get more involved with the, the community. So, he said that he would come up and send officers as well.
Chief, would we need a formal agreement with, between ourselves and the Union County?
It's a park. They come up and they do Bryant Park, they do different parks, as long as we establish that it's a park, they come up at the end of Michigan, that's a county park, they come up and they'll walk that, so.
So, it doesn't require...
I think it's just a handshake, and, and we can just work on that. It's just kind of like when we talk with transit, to come up and patrol their, their train station, you know, we're the first responders there, but we talked with that chief, and now that they've made actually a post there, just because we just kind of stayed on them.
But chief, this would be designated as a county park, then? Sorry.
One at a time, yeah. Okay, Matt.
So, this would be designated as a county park?
No, I'm not saying that, I'm just saying that if we use the word "park," I'm sure that we can work something out.
Thank you.
Just a quick follow-up, what's the typical response time of a county police officer to Bryant Park, for example?
It differs where they're coming, we're always going to be first responders, just like on 24 and 78, we'll go out there for a, a car accident, but once the state police comes, it's their jurisdiction, they take, same thing, if there's any kind of incident up there, we're going to respond, and then they can, they would write it at Bryant Park.
Okay. Chief, since you're standing up here, let me ask you, one of the things that they showed was a gate, right, as an option for, you guys can go to the slide for the gate. Not, not the, not the gate for, like, cars to stop, but a gate for pedestrians. If we, if, if, if there was to be gates on, like, say, let's say, there's a bridge on Morris Avenue, and you gated it on one side, and then there's a bridge, of course, on Ashwood also, you gated it, so basically, the area of Henry Street, behind Henry Street, would be closed off at certain point in time. Is that something that's just doable, that you guys, that your guys can go out there, lock it on one side, walk over, lock it on the other, and then therefore it's a, or would you, first, from, from your perspective, A, is, is that a good idea, or it could be just a bad idea?
So, I like the gate, only because I don't want a car driving down that, because obviously, and, and you, you don't need a, a weapon to go into a school, you can just drive across recess, right? So, I would hate for anybody to be able to drive down this, and, and, you know, cause injuries. So, but the gate's a good visual deterrent. I know we talked about fences and things like that. Let's be realistic, people have fences, and they, their homes still get broken into. That fence is not going to stop somebody, if they're really, I live on the tracks in Madison, right? So, the tracks, and one of my first questions to them, because that is a big thing for burglaries, where they'll hit the, the house, and then they have the tracks, I've been there over 20 years, no one on our, our street has ever had a break-in entry, and I also live right by, behind Fairly, where that, that trail starts and goes, and, you know, my kids learned how to ride a bike, so, I mean, I think it's a great thing. If someone wants to get in, they're going to get in, right? Whether it's a gate, it's a 20-foot, you know, fence or something. But now, change the word "security," Councilwoman, to "privacy," it's a whole different thing. And the privacy thing, I totally get, with, with the residents, and that, I, you know, that should be there, you know, so no one's looking in their bedrooms and things like that. But to think that, that fence might keep somebody out from going in their backyard?
Right, so the fence, security-wise, the fence, but the privacy, but again, as a, let's just stay on the gate, because I just want to figure out whether you guys are, from your, from a police perspective, does it make sense to lock up at night or not?
I say no.
Okay, fine.
Thank you. Chief? For, for as concerned, we're going to treat like any other park in town. We're going to look at it, look for potential hazards, conditions, develop an operational plan. Our guys are out there anyway, doing footwork on the ground, doing operational plans for town. So far as cost goes, other than any kind of major emergency, not very, not many really daily operational costs that will incur, I don't think, for having this in town, just like any of the park we have in town.
Your, your department's a little bit different, that I wouldn't ask for a yearly cost, but my question is the foundation, have you looked at the, a typical-sized park like this? Have you looked at what the, what an emergency cost typically run on, on this, a sized park like this, a railway park?
Are you council president? No, we have not. As I had said earlier, we would look to the city to develop their, the cost of their responsibility, which we would see that as long within their purview, we're more focused on construction and development.
Beth, any other questions?
I don't think that's it.
Okay, well, I'm, I'm going to forestall asking questions, because you guys have been very patient to, so it's now the public's turn. Who wants to start? Yes, please, come on up. This is question time, not, not comment time.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Thank you. This all goes together? Oh, he got, he's got his own.
Thanks.
I don't like to share with you.
Okay, so my question is, I...
I'm sorry, first name and address?
Mary Jo McCucci Difonzo, 12 Washington Avenue in Summit.
Thank you.
My first question is, now you've got my little packet. The first page is taken from data.usa, and this is the breakup, they've broken up Summit into four quadrants. By, I did, I wanted to know the median income in Summit. I wanted to know the median income in Summit, and as you can see, on the second page, I kind of wrote it out on this one. Median income for East Summit is $82,000 and change. The other sides of town are $126,000, $188,000, $212,000. These statistics are from 2017. So, my question is, I saw a slide on there for like a split second about property values and liability. Can we bring that up? Is that possible?
Sure. So, so the question is about, so, and, and somebody from the park line, I assume, will be able to address about property values?
Because somebody passed, somebody passed a comment that property values would increase. My research, that's not true. There is a committee in Linfield, Massachusetts, I believe it is, in this packet, if you turn to, I think it's the third page, Burke Gilman Trail Property Values in Washington State, I believe, were the first trails done in the country. This gives a projection from the late 70s to now, and it, and it, there's a graph that shows the property values in the 70s, and how they've grown in other parts of the town, but not where the properties are bordering these trails.
Okay, so, is there someone from the park line that would like to address the issue of, and I think it was raised, as somebody made a comment about property values, if someone could address the specific question that is being asked, that in other instances, in other places...
I wasn't done.
Hold on, in other places, property values have not increased?
They've increased, but more slowly in...
More slowly, the rate of increase has been less, lesser.
Right, so here's my thing, you're asking people...
No, wait, 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 that's the question, right? I want to, somebody's going to answer, right?
What we found, not we, this was Rails to Trails Conservancy, and, and the Delaware Valley Regional Planning Commission, which is the metropolitan planning organization for Philadelphia and the nine surrounding counties, that with these trails, with the Perkyomen Trail, there was an increase within a quarter-mile of $4,700, the trail went in about 15 years ago. The Radner Trail, it went up, actually, well, prices there were pretty steep to begin with, it went up $69,139. And that, yeah, the other thing is that the, in terms of property values, that the open space is a marketable amenity. These show you townhouse with a private entrance, and this is something in the ad for condominiums, as well as they can charge more, and the same is true in saying what's, you know, perfect about this area, you know, is the presence of the trail. So...
Okay, I'd like your resources, because according to my research...
Certainly.
...that's not true. I will, I will do further research on the land, the Journal of Land Economics.
We'll be glad to give you the websites.
I would like to do my own research, because what I'm finding is that this is not true. So, my point to all this was, that when you have the residents of East Summit, whose median income's $82,000, which is well below where the rest of Summit is, if, if they're going to take a loss, if their property values are going to decrease, as the research that I'm finding, so then you're telling me that, okay, you're going to take a $30,000 loss on your house. When somebody makes $82,000 a year and change, that's significant, that's their retirement, their home is their biggest investment.
Mary Jo, this is, again, this is question time, you can certainly come back and, and make a statement and comment, but again, I want to get through questions first, before we get to comments. So, do you have any further questions?
Well, my other question is, I haven't heard anything about drainage through this whole thing.
Perfect, okay.
And down by me, by Brandt Park, we flood down there all the time, so what are you going to do about drainage?
Fair enough. Drainage.
Certainly. In designing the trails, I think I did mention, was starting to mention with Radner, where we put drainage piping in, that all the funding that we would get of grants requires that we deal with stormwater management. I mentioned that on the Radner Trail, the Department of Transportation said they would follow all the local regulations, and it's worked very well. Right now, when you have an abandoned railroad, there were drains originally on the railroad, they're all clogged, they haven't been cleaned in maybe 70 years or more. So, what we've done in the design is to reopen the drainage system, to put in stormwater management areas, to put in rain gardens, and other things, to help deal with the wet areas that do exist.
But you haven't looked at specifically this trail to figure out where the drainage locations would be, have you?
Just a, a cursory review to begin, we've walked the whole thing, and going out into Hidden Valley Park, and up into their areas that, you can see where there's clogs and, you know, pools that have formed that could easily...
I think, let me be more specific, okay? I assume that the people who live with houses next to the park are probably the most concerned about drainage issues, rather than a wetland inside Hidden Valley Park, right? So, if we focus just on the areas that are adjacent, specifically, probably Henry Street is probably the most, but there's also Edgar's Court to some degree, right?
Ashwood Court.
And Ashwood on the other side, sorry. Henry and Ashwood together, and then Edgar's Court. Have you looked at how drainage would work to avoid having, for example, if you have an asphalt surface, right, the rain's going to fall, it's going to go somewhere.
Yes, I can answer that very quickly.
Right, and it's, instead of seeping through the ground, because now it's a pervious surface, you're making it an impervious surface. That's Mary Jo's point. How, have you looked at how to address the drainage question?
Yes.
Okay.
And the answer is that where you have a rail bed, the ground is very compacted from having trains running over it. So, when you scarify that area and loosen it up, you put in your paving, right, you can pitch the drain to the edge where you have gravel surfaces that allow... You can pitch the drain to the edge where you have gravel surfaces that allow the water to percolate through. You use pervious pavement rather than impervious pavement. Then you have huge drains that are underneath the trail to capture all that water, so it's not going down the embankment and creating problems for the homeowners and other property owners.
Got it. Thank you.
Could we bring up the liability thing on here?
Is there a slide on liability?
I saw it.
Just a-
There were property values and one was liability.
Yep. Right.
Okay. So, my question is, I, I know I saw on the feasibility study at one point that the homeowner would be liable for any injuries. It has since been taken down. Is that true?
I'll answer that very easily. No, you're only liable for injuries if the trail is on your property.
Okay, okay. Hold on. What did you just say? What did, repeat that, please.
Okay, well, there are two aspects to it. Just in general, right, as a property owner, one is liable for things that occur on their property.
Okay.
Now, number two, is that there is a land, New Jersey Landowner Liability Act.
Right.
Right? Which says, if you are a property owner and you allow people on the property for recreational purposes and other purposes, like hunting or whatever, and you do not charge a fee, this is not a park that has a fee, then there is no liability to the owner.
There is no liability to the owner?
But, in this case, as far-
Can I get that in writing?
What's that?
I say, can we get that in writing?
There's the website, right there. We'll give it to you, yeah.
I would appreciate that.
Sure. We can take a snapshot for you.
Okay.
Camera.
Okay, thank you. Okay. Questions? Yes, please, come on up.
Linda Gagliano, 71 Michigan Avenue, Summit, New Jersey. This is the first I'm hearing about an access onto, from Michigan Avenue onto this park line. Is this an emergency access, or will it be where people can come and access as an entrance?
It would most likely be an access, it would give, Michigan Avenue comes right up to Hidden Valley Park, right? So, this is already a public access to the park. So, we would not be changing that. We'd just be improving the trail that's there.
The trail that's there? Through the, through the county property?
Through the, through the parkland, yes. And we also-
You talked about parking at the pool and then accessing-
I think, I think what Linda is referring to is the access, I think this was alluded to with regard to through the Celgene property, right? There's a Celgene property that is there at Michigan Avenue.
Right.
And I think her question is with regard to that.
No, if, you know, what, what we're proposing is that Michigan Avenue ends at, there's that Celgene property, right? Which would give the people from Celgene access to Michigan Avenue and then to the aquatic park. But also, Michigan Avenue, as it goes east, ends, but it ends right at the parkland. And that's, that's, the trail would be just inside there.
There's an exist, Michigan Avenue ends at Hidden Valley Park.
Right.
Correct. There is an existing trailhead at there.
Right.
Let's keep that out of the picture, because I don't think that's her question. And Linda can correct me if I'm wrong. But I think she's referring to, when you say from the, from the pool, you're not talking about the trailhead. What you're talking about is access through the Celgene-owned lot.
Lot.
Lot, to get an easement or a right of access through that, correct?
Yes.
And she's asking, what's your question, Linda?
Is that gonna be an emergency only? Or is it gonna be an access point for people to, to go right into that parkland?
Rob, do you wanna come up and answer that? Yeah, thank you.
Sure, go ahead.
I'm just her husband.
You're, it's fine, that's good, that's good. You're giving her moral support, love it. Even with my wife, she would correct everything I've said so far, so that's okay.
To answer your question, Celgene, which would really be, taking care of that part, their plans do not include that access point. And as a foundation, we, while it was mentioned tonight, I would see it only as an emergency access. And I don't necessarily think it's needed, because they already have an emergency access around the corner. So, I don't foresee that, and that's not in any plans that Celgene has.
Okay. Another question. I'm not quite familiar where the railroad tracks went on the Celgene property. But right in back of my house, I'm the last house on the street.
Right.
I get drainage from Edgar's Court, Michigan Avenue, Summit Pool, and Celgene in my backyard. I have an easement under my driveway. I get from there and, I'm not even Italian. So, my question is, do you know approximately where this walkway would be in relation? I have, I have, right in back of my property on Celgene's property, there's water, drainage, and it comes into my yard. So, my question is, am I gonna get more drainage from this park line that's gonna flow into my yard, go out into the woods?
No. Our understanding from Celgene is that they're planning to build a parking structure, right, and reduce the amount of surface parking, right? That way, they'll still have the same amount of parking, but with more open space, so more planted area which would absorb water.
Okay, so, but where would the railroad tracks go?
Well, the railroad track went between their buildings. They would provide space outside a new perimeter fence. It would be some distance from the other homes that are there at Michigan Avenue. And with planted area beyond, which would absorb, would be designed to absorb the water with rain gardens and pervious areas.
Okay.
Okay. Thank you, Lynn. Oh, go ahead, no.
Also, my daughter will probably get up to speak to this, but I can't believe this is happening. I own a house at Ashwood Court, which is also affected by this park line. So, I will let her get up and speak to that.
Okay. Next. Yes, sir, come on up.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening, council members. My name is Sunny Pace, and I'm on 20 Henry Street. One question. You've talked about building the wall and the drainage. Now, is this going to be done before the trail or the park line is opened? Or afterwards, yes, we will do the wall, we will do the drainage?
It would typically be constructed as part of the trail construction.
Before the trail opens?
Yes. Yeah, the trail could not open until it was all completed.
Thank you. Thank you for your question. Next. Anybody else have any questions? Risa, come on up.
Risa Gorlick, 9 Russell Place. My question is, this is the first time we've heard that there's gonna be an access point on Russell. Russell Place is a high train track. We're concerned about where the parking is going to be. There's, you can only park on one side of the street. It's the side of the street that I live on. Bridges is on the end when there's a play, when there's activities going on at the church building. Parking on my street is near impossible. Additionally, there's an awful lot of traffic in the morning and in the afternoon with school, pick-up and drop-off, because they use it as a shortcut to miss the light at Ashwood. So, my question is, how are we going to handle the parking issue? Where is the access point?
Well, again, for automobiles, you're looking at parking about every mile to two miles.
I wanna know where the access is going to be on Russell Place.
Okay.
And then, and then if there is access where you can, I mean, I kinda like that there's going to be a park line, and that I will live close to it. So, I'm not against the park line, per se. But my concern is, you know, am I gonna be able to get out my driveway to get to work and get back into my driveway? It's, Russell Place is one of the narrowest streets, I was told, in Summit.
Okay. That, that access would be really only for pedestrians and bicycles, baby car?
How are we, I mean, and I still don't understand how you're going to grate something up, I mean, it's high. So, how are you going to get from the street level?
I think her question is, how are you going to construct it?
I wanna see a model.
Yeah. How are you going to construct it in such a way?
Because if I have to carry, my, my, my husband and I have a tandem bike. If we have to carry a tandem bike up a flight of steps like that, that's not gonna-
I can show you the slide again of the ramp in the identical situation. It would be several hundred feet long. It would climb gradually and easily.
Where, where are you putting this several hundred feet-long ramp on Russell Place?
On the embankment. You have the trail at the top.
I, I think-
I don't understand how this trail from here is coming up.
So, I think what she's saying is, unlike your, your photograph, which, up here, hold on, just let me finish. I think I, so I can explain. What your photograph looks like is, you have this expansive land, and you have this nice sloping driveway, if you will, ramp that goes up. What she's saying is, in her location, in Russell Place, it is, you have a curb or a road, and you have an embankment, and you have your trail up there. You don't have the ability to go nicely, smoothly going up for a few hundred feet.
Unless you knock down some houses.
She's asking specifically, how are you? Are you doing a zigzag pattern? Are you doing staircase? What are you doing?
I wanna see a model. I wanna see, like, not a, not a map like this that doesn't have any detail. I want to see how this is going to look from my street level and from other access points on the map.
Have you done, have you done, for each of these access locations, specific drawing, schematics, whatever word you wanna use, to show exactly, depending upon the actual grade and elevation, how this would be designed? Yes or no?
No, we have not.
Thank you. So, they don't have it for you?
Okay. I would, but before, my, my question then to council would be, I would appreciate, you know, how do I put this as a question? Please consider the residents before you vote on this, to, to get that information from them, because I don't think it's fair to anybody. I mean, I've been getting your emails for the park line for a long time now. I would think that you would have thought this through, okay? And I'm a little disappointed that you haven't, and that you're expecting council to vote on this and to start building a bridge to nowhere. That, that doesn't make sense.
Thank you, Risa.
Thank you.
Okay, next. Oh, Rob, come up, respond.
Counsel, just in, in response, part of these meetings are exactly for that, is to get the public input, the questions, and to be answered. So, we respond and react to the input from the residents. So, that's the explicit reason we're having these meetings. So, this is our, our way, as we've done in many other public meetings and settings, to get input from the neighborhoods and, and react to that.
Thank you. Okay. Any other questions? Okay, Larry, come on up.
Thank you, David. Larry Costigan from 8 Henry Street. Thanks, everybody, for coming out and seeing it from our perspective. I kinda have two questions, and I'm not getting any answers from the park line, so maybe the fire chief can explain something to me here. The proximity of the trail behind our house is no less than twenty-five yards to my house. If you put up a fence or mesh, where you let people back there that can throw a cigarette and ignite something, does that not increase the fire risk? And we're talking about not getting a fire truck back there, my house is gonna burn to the ground. And people say, well, it's back there now. No one's walking back there with a cigarette. You're not putting a trail back there. So, Chief, my question would be, if you put up these barriers to help with the privacy and the security, which is great, are we not creating a fire hazard that your, your brave firefighters are gonna have a hard time putting out a fire?
Come on up, Chief.
The question, I really, um-
Hold on, one second. Larry, did you have a second question?
I did, but not with the chief.
Oh, okay. Why don't you just stay here, so you don't have to go back and forward? Go ahead, go ahead, Chief, sorry.
It's kind of our question to answer. I mean, right now, it's more of a fire risk now, because a lot of vegetation up there that's not being taken care of. If you put down pavement, that lessens some of it. A fence could act as a slowdown point for fires. It's really hard, there's a lot of conditions, wind, but I would say not really anything major, having a fence there.
Wouldn't a fence still become a danger?
It could, it could, yeah. But we're actually, our response time is anywhere under seven minutes in town. So, by the time something gets going, you know, we get up there pretty quickly, I grab the train, the fire is kinda far, we pre-plan those areas, so, I mean, it could, but also it can be helpful as well. Right now, there's nothing there. It can run down the hill. If something, a barrier can stop it. So, it's kinda hard to say if it could or couldn't, but it's not really any kind of major concern for us as far as mitigating a fire hazard there. We're trying to do it. We are pre-plan it, prepare for it, so we can definitely take care of the situation if, you know, if there arose, okay?
Smoke free, you can do some damage.
Oh, no, 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 we're not having, again, we're not doing that, right? No, we're not gonna do all this back and forth here. Get through this here.
The thing about what the chief was explaining, though, there currently are not people walking back there with, that can throw a cigarette back there, and that's what you would invite was, is people walking on a trail. My second question is, is anyone from the town, since once this construction is done and the park line is wiping their hands of it, and we're gonna be, as taxpayers, in charge of the maintenance of it, does anyone talk to the insurance company that insures the town and find out about the liability and the premiums of what it's gonna cost the town here if someone gets injured using this park line, okay? Or has a heart attack back there? Or something happens because our AMS people can't get back there fast enough? Or, God forbid, there's a terrorist attack back there, which we saw in New York City, where people drive cars on park, on park paths? So, has anyone from the town run the numbers on that? Because it's great to think that maintenance is only ten thousand dollars a year, but we all know how insurance works in this world, and it's the most expensive thing out there.
Thank you, Larry. I, I will, I, I, I don't know. Michael, you wanna, if, if it has been looked at, if it hasn't been looked at, we can just leave it?
In the interest of brevity, no. It hasn't been looked at.
Okay, thank you. All right. Yes, sir, please, come on, oh, Rob.
Are you council president? Actually, when I was still a member of council, we did an inquiry with our JIF, Joint Insurance Fund, regarding liability, and there would be no increase in the premium.
Okay, thank you. Yes, well, no, 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 well-
Can you ask a question? What's the note?
Larry, 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 okay. For, for, while Councilman Rubino, or when he was formerly Councilman Rubino, may have looked at it, the answer is, right now, from the city administrator, right? He speaks for the city. He gave you an answer. That's the answer. Yes, sir, go ahead.
Thank you, Council. Derek Mikalski, the first house on Morris, 154 Morris Avenue. Nobody's addressing this elephant in the room. The question is, without the bridge, there is no park line. So, my question is, how important is this bridge to this entire project?
Thank you for your question. Would anybody from the park line would like to answer about the importance of the bridge to the entire project?
The, the park line as it exists is a connection. It's a connection between Broad Street, Morris Ave, and that is the existing park line. It, the vision is to connect the downtown to Bryant Park, so the bridge is crucial. It's the linchpin. That, we've been gifted that bridge, and the funding for that bridge, and making that connection not only completes the, the vision of the park line, but it also provides that pedestrian and bike access across Morris Ave that, quite honestly, in my view, is suboptimal when I see folks crossing up the pedestrian access that exists right now, the triple path on Morris Ave down to Glen Side.
Great, thank you. Okay. Are there any other public questions? Yes, sir, please, come on up.
My name is Paul Najarian, on Morris Avenue. Just got a quick question. Everybody's been talking about, first of all, the presentation's been great, beautiful presentation from you guys, I have to admit that. But no one has, we've all talked about the disturbance of the land. We talked about fencing, and we've talked about embankment, tree planting, and access points. But no one has talked about what is underneath all that? What kind of carcinogens is underneath all this railroad tracks? Has anybody done any land studies? That's what I want to know.
Has there been any sampling? The question is, I think, of, of the...
Exactly.
The ground.
Yes.
Yes? No? Anybody want to speak to it? So Rob, go ahead.
Sure. As part of the process, environmental borrowings would be the first thing before any land would be disturbed.
Thank you. Okay. So it has not been done to date?
No.
Right. So that's the answer. Anyone else? Going once, going twice? Yes, sir, come on up.
My name is Eric Niebles. I live on 42 Russell. Just to echo the comment from my neighbor on Russell, she did a fantastic job explaining our, our area. I guess two questions. My first one is, do you foresee the trail extending beyond Summit to Bryant Park and beyond?
Yes, one of you guys.
Because I'm closest to the mic. I'm just trying to get across Morris Ave. right now. I want to go home, man. So, you know, let the folks in Springfield and points beyond, yeah, what, what would be a great vision if you get on your bike to downtown Summit or walk all the way through Union County to the East Coast Greenway, which is basically an I-95 of rail trail? Hey, but you know what? Dream big. But the point is, I just want to help the citizens of Summit, give them a, a new park and a safer way to get through town. And that's, that's the goal, and then I'm done.
My, my reason for asking is because then it becomes a, um...
Okay, guys, 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 we want to get through the question.
It becomes an issue of not just local, it becomes outsiders, which is also the potential for increased crime in the area. Then my other question, I guess this is more toward the...
Chiefs.
The chiefs. Is it possible to do without access point seven, six, and three? Or is that just...
Wait a minute.
Yeah, that would be helpful.
So, and no disrespect, but outsiders is not going to increase crime? That's, I mean, we have a vibrant downtown, they're not all Summit residents, and our crime's not increasing, so. I want all the access points, and I even said I want another one, because I want to be able to get to whoever needs help the quickest.
Okay. Thank you. Appreciate it.
Thank you. Okay. Any other questions from the public? Yes?
Tara Gagnano, 6 Ashwood Court. I just want to say that right behind my house, this is where the park line's going to go. So I, my question is more towards the lighting, because it's going to directly impact the back of my house, and, again, the drainage. So, and, and obviously, some kind of abutment or something to protect. So, there is no plan for that, or there is a plan?
I think, to the drainage, he said that, to answer your question about drainage, he said that that would be something that they need to still do, or would need to do before, to answer the other gentleman's point, they would need to do before they went ahead and did any construction.
Okay. Because I know that a lot of emphasis was put on Henry Street, but Ashwood Court is right there, too.
Right. But your question about lighting...
Yeah. The lighting, the drainage, because we have huge drainage issues on Ashwood Court.
What is your specific question about lighting? What they envision or what you would like to see? Or what, or...
Well, the, the lighting should definitely be more towards the ground, if anything.
It should.
So, and there definitely needs to be some kind of barrier, because it's literally my backyard.
Right.
Okay. Thank you.
All right. Thank you.
Okay. Any other questions? Going once? Going twice? Okay. We're done with public questions. Now it's time for public comments. Anyone that would like to make a comment? Now's your opportunity. Yes, ma'am, come on up. And this is where we apply the three minutes, so we're going to start clocking.
I promise I will be brief. Good evening. My name is Lauren Yedbeb. I'm the chief operating officer of Overlook Medical Center. Alan Lieber would be here this evening, but he had to attend a shiva in Manhattan. I am here to express overlook support for the park line overlook, for the park line. Overlook has been a supporter of this undertaking from the start, both financially and in terms of facilitating a working relationship concerning our adjoining properties. We have an interest in improving the health and attractiveness of the community and in providing a safe place for the families of our patients to take a walk and get fresh air while visiting our hospital. The first segment, which is the two tenths of a mile from Broad Street to Morris Avenue, has been laid out, and there is also a path up the hill to Upper Overlook Road. But that is not enough. We believe that the original vision of the park line was to create a recreational pathway that connects Bryant Park and Overlook Medical Center to downtown. The next phase is critical to reaching this vision. One of the big challenges that is becoming a national issue is healthcare in, in healthcare is provider burnout. We have established a robust resiliency and wellness program and are beginning to incorporate the park line into those efforts. We urge you to support this worthwhile project. Alan, through his conversations with the local community, knows it has broad support throughout Summit, and I thank you for the opportunity to advocate for this worthwhile project.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Oh, oh, can we get that, since it's a written statement, can we get a copy of that, please? Do you mind? Thank you very much. Yes, please, thank you. Yes. Okay. Thanks very much. Okay. Anyone else would like to? Mary Jo, come on up.
Can we turn the, the, um, is that the only one that's ready?
Oh, no, no, you don't have to come to the mic, right?
I can't.
Oh, okay, fine. Go ahead, go ahead.
I can direct the point.
I can't reach. Sorry. I'm not liking this here. I mean, I don't want this thing in the first place, but when you've got access point one here and access point three here, there's only one other in between those two. This is too open a space.
Okay.
Look, only access point on this side. You've got three here, that's it. With that, with that open space.
Okay. Wait, wait, this is comment period, Rob. It's no more questions. So we're going to, we're going to... I know you want to say something. You can finish off with comments. Let's just try to get this through.
So, my question, my, actually, where did he go? The guy that lived on Russell, where did he go? Okay. According to their feasibility study, the East Coast Greenway is mentioned on pages six, 12, 24, and 48. The parks that this will connect to are Bryant, the Watchong Reservation, Galloping Hill Golf Course, Rowway River Park, Houdale, Mizel. That's on page 12. When I looked further on the map on page 13, I also found Lenape Park, Nomehegan, Echo Lake Park, Larchmont Reservation, Joe Collins Park, Roseau Park on Westfield Avenue, and Blackbrook Park. So to answer your question, I've seen signs when I'm driving through Westfield at the T of Nomehegan and Westfield Avenue, I'm sorry, Springfield Avenue, turning onto East Broad to go in Westfield, and there is a humongous sign that says Lenape on the top of it. And on the very bottom of that sign, it says East Coast Greenway. I have a picture if you'd like to see it. So the point I was trying to make before is that when you've got people in East Summit who make $82,000 a year, if their property values are going to decrease, their home is their biggest investment. So now you're going to tell me that, and I'm going by my research, not yours, now you're telling me that, okay, you have to take a $30,000 loss on your house because we decided to put this thing through. That's not right. I'm sorry. This thing was not there when they bought their homes, and now it's going to be there? How can you tell people who make $82,000 a year, median income, that they're going to lose 30, maybe more, thousand dollars on their house? This is their investment. This is their retirement. But you're going to tell them, eh, too bad. This is what we're doing. I'm sorry, I don't agree with that decision.
Thank you. Okay. Wait, 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 please, hold on. Yes, ma'am, come on up.
I'm Ingrid Adosamena. I live in 8 Henry Street, and I just wanted to thank you for taking the time to come into my house and checking the reality of what's going on with this park line. I just want to say that the city has been very proactive, caring of their citizens and their children. I work with kids, and I support 100% the full-day kindergarten, which Mr. Rubino doesn't. This is not about my ego or my name on a plate. This is a personal issue to me and to my family. This is a waste of money and resources. We can put all this money together and hiring more teachers, implementing the educational system, and the list can go on. Thank you for your time.
Thank you very much. Okay. Sir, come on up.
Derek Mikalski, 154 Morris. I've been in this town 18 years, and every single year, I prayed for this day, because this eyesore, which is the current railroad track behind my house, and the hospital is very gracious, supporting this issue. My house is next to the hospital, the first house on Morris Avenue, and we all know the elephant in the room. Without the bridge, there is no park line. So we have to seriously ask ourselves, and you, council president, members of the council, your job is to protect my values and my health. Right now, the safety of Morris Avenue is not existing. It's a dangerous intersection. This bridge will not save me only crossing the bridge, but hundreds of residents who they don't know what to do. I see people with bicycles fighting for their life on Mor, on Morris Avenue. So first of all, safety. This bridge will save, let's not talk lives to the sheriff, but will save us crossing Morris Avenue. If you want to walk to the middle of the town, to the downtown, there is no way you can get to the downtown. Safety. So first, safety. Second of all, beauty of this backyard of my house, right now, is an eyesore. No matter what they do, I'm supporting, with the bushes, without the bushes, with the fence, without the fence. There is no better improvement to my property than this park line. So God bless. Thank you, those gentlemen, for being here, and for 18 years, I never expected my property to go up in value, and now I am 99.999% sure that this will improve my property value. So to all those folks who are afraid of property value, this is my property here. I own property in Bergen County. This will improve your property value. Do your research. Don't be scared that millions of people will be walking behind your house. You know who will be walking behind your house? My neighbors, who I already converted on Henry Street. I have a couple neighbors, they were against this, and I told them, I looked in their faces, I says, "Look what you have right now in your backyard. Garbage, overgrown trees, and eyesore." So what you're proposing is much better than what we have. So thank you for that. Now, we need money, so obviously, everybody needs to get busy and start lobbying friends at Celgene to give you more money, Overlook Hospital, and we all should look in our wallets and start donating, because what those gentlemen did is unbelievable. I saw Jeff walking with the chainsaw, cutting the bushes. Those folks deserve Summit Nobel Prize.
Thank you. Okay. Yes, sir, come on up.
Counsel, Joe Gallegos, 14 Denon Place. I found it odd that nobody said that anybody on Denon lived next to the park line, because I see a couple of my neighbors here that are in support of this project. Last night, my wife and I took a walk on Phase 1, which I would invite all of you to go see. There's benches up. The Boy Scouts came and did an Eagle project and put bat boxes on the park line, and so last night at, at dusk, there were little bats flying around. My brother-in-law, visiting from Los Angeles, went for a walk with us, and he said, "This is behind your house? This is awesome." And we walked our dogs, and he's like, "This is, this, what did this do to your property value?" I'm like, "I don't know. We just got our house two years ago." But we're in full support of this project. I've seen the evolution of this in the past two years, go from being a trash pile to being a trail with benches and a safe place for my kids to get to and from town, and they do use it. So, in terms of the privacy issues, I, for the folks that live on Henry, I, I know it's a different situation, but so far, they have addressed our issues on Denon by putting up shrubs, trees, so nobody can see really inside the backyards, and as these trees grow in, I don't think it'll be an issue at all. That's my feeling. We haven't had any security issues. The only people I've seen back there are my neighbors. I did have one security issue. A German Shepherd did come into my yard when I was mowing the lawn, because he was off-leash, and he barked at my lawnmower, and that was it. So, so far, it's been great. So, thank you, thank you, Dr. Rubino, for what you're doing, and that's my comment. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Okay. Yes, ma'am, come on up.
Hi, good evening. Thanks for a lively discussion. My name's Kate Giovanna Batista. I live on 1 Henry Street, and we've been Summit residents for about four years now, my husband and our young three daughters. And just recently, my husband was actually had the opportunity to join the board to give more of a voice to East Summit. And so, over that course of time, we've gotten to know a lot more about the project and are really excited about it. And one of the main reasons why we support the project is to actually have safe passage from downtown to, from our, from East Summit to downtown. That intersection is very challenging, and so the thought of my three children, one day walking to middle school, or walking by themselves down to Bryant Park, or taking their bikes, it gives me more reassurance that there is a safe and easy path for them to do that on. And also, coming from a city environment to Summit, we like the ability to walk. We don't like to walk, to hop in our car to access downtown, so this actually gives us more of an ability to safely access downtown easily as well. And on a personal note, I've had the ability to grow up in towns that have had these trails constructed and are in existence. One, in particular, the Cardinal Greenway, which is a 62-mile trail that runs through Indiana, and they've done several 10-year studies to show that crime rates actually stay the same or go down. Home values do go up an average 10 to 15%. And they can also give you some great data. I think that were some of the questions that came up tonight, on like, what's the average cost per square mile on some of these things? So, my ask tonight is that, as a council, you all get behind the project and work together with the residents, the foundation, and as a city, to really kind of work through these really, really, really valid concerns. And I think it's, there's, there's real opportunity here for the entire town of Summit to benefit from a park line. So I just want to make sure that that's also top of mind and not, we're not buried in the weeds of all of these little minutia details, because they are solvable problems, and this is not the first town to create a park line. So, thank you.
Thank you very much. Ma'am, please, come on up.
My name is Vivian Hardy. I live at 1 Oak Knoll Road in Summit. I want to thank the members of common council and the audience for such a detailed thought. I actually think the members of the park line group probably have learned something from all the questions that have been asked, and that those concerns will be what they think about as they go forward. I'm a member of the Summit Garden Club, and we're a bunch of older ladies, for the most part, but one of the things we like to do is think about what we can do to improve the community. An example is the community garden. Also Bryant Park. The garden club has contributed to these kinds of things. Last year, I suddenly became aware that there was this thing called the park line that was going on, and one of the things I loved about it was, it was this group of men, for the most part, who were dedicating four years of their life to try to get this job done. And the job was to bring the whole community of Summit, to tie it together in a way that it's never been tied together before. In addition, it was to bring a new park to Summit. Summit hasn't had a new park in over 60 years. Six, zero. Parks change a lot in the lives of, of people over 60-year period. I have a son who lives in Minneapolis. My husband and son get on their bikes and ride from park to park to park, across bridges, up and down hills, through wonderful places in the middle of the city of Minneapolis. We're only talking about one little mile of space, and the details that you asked are really, really important, because the job won't get done well unless those details are thought through. But the idea of bringing the whole city of Summit together, east, west, north, and south, is really critical. The last thing I'd like to say about the garden club is, though, when I looked at it, it was an opportunity for the garden club to go out and plant things. We can plant to plan landscape, to put wildflowers and things in place so that we have a beautiful[1784.41] place in Summit. And that's something that I'd like you all to put into your mind as a vision of how this could be if we all work together. This is an opportunity for community development. I hope that you will join the effort to do that. Ask your questions. Make sure the details get worked out, but get behind it because it's really, I think, an important thing for the city of Summit.
Thank you, Vivian. Okay. Jordan, come on up.
Jordan Glad. I must say, the view's very different from this way than... It's good to be back. I just want to say that this is a project that's been on the books, I believe, since 2006, as I think is part of our master plan. It's a great community project. I ask those that are concerned about it to think about any project that we have done in Summit that they would not do today. And my point is Summit has a great history of listening to the residents, taking their concerns, addressing them, and making it right for them. I ask counsel not to just veto... There are, I listened earlier this evening, and there are quite a few issues that need to be addressed with this project. I ask you, rather than just, if you have, or if you, instead of voting it down, if that's where you're headed, table it, get the answers, and move forward. I don't, I think we're, I'm afraid we're going to throw away the baby with the bathwater with this project. It'd be a great project for Summit, and I think everybody, the neighbors, all the residents could win from it. So thank you.
Thank you, Jordan. Daniel, come on up.
Hi, I'm Dan McMahon, 57 Michigan Avenue. So two years ago, I think I was here in opposition. Dr. Rubino, you were sitting over there. I changed my mind. This is a wonderful project. I based my change of heart on the meeting we had at the First Aid Squad. Was that a year and a half ago? No, not that. Couple of months ago. And it's going to be a great project. The trail will literally go in my backyard, and I'm not a NIMBY. I'm a YABY. Is there, I don't know.
YIMBY.
What's the...
YIMBY.
Yeah, okay, thanks. I knew there was an acronym. Couple of things. I'm also a first responder in Summit. We'll always get to wherever your emergency is. I can speak probably for the police chief and the fire chief. We'll get there. I'm glad you didn't talk too much about the New York City View. It's not a thing. Anyway, there's 38 houses that abut the trail. So those people should be given priority in notifications about what's going on. And I have a couple of things, but I'm going to ignore. So thank you.
Thanks, Dan. Okay. Yes, sir. Come on up.
Hi, my name is Jay Cho at 145 Morris Avenue. I live right on the Phase One property line, and I've actually put my blood, sweat, and tears into actually helping it out lately. I met Dr. Rubino maybe a year ago, and with Dr. Jeff as well. And because of this, I actually met my neighbors, like Joe. I would honestly never met him. Pat over there. He lives at Denman, so we're exactly opposite across, but because of this, we actually merged and met with each other. Pat walks her dog every day. My neighbor, Mark, also walks his dog. I see a lot of dog walkers walk this path right now. But it brings people out. My mother actually walks the trail around Overlook, and it takes her about 40 minutes. But that's 40 minutes of exercise. And this is a good thing. I don't know why people are against it. This was Phase One. I see it's different. But overall, it's going to be a good thing. I've been putting a lot of effort into this. I've actually, I'm developing a butterfly garden. Hopefully, we'll get that by the end of the summer. In the wintertime, you heard Dr. Rubino talk about the maple syrup. I mostly did it. So like, this could be a seasonal thing. Like, with the season changes, we could do different projects. And this is a good thing. We have the Boy Scouts. I'm not sure if people left or not. There was an Eagle Scout out here. He put his hard effort into it. They put bat houses. Before, in my area, it was completely a swamp land because of the way the water just held in place. But now with the pavement, the water can escape. There's a lot less mosquitoes. So these are all things that, I know this, you guys are financially worried about this, but these are all things that you can't financially see. The fact that I can go outside without getting murdered by the mosquitoes. The fact that we're walking. I'm out there. I'm exercising. I'm cutting down knotweed. I'm cutting down a lot of the bushes. So if you can get the people out there to actually donate some of their time and effort, it becomes a community thing. We were talking with Joe about maybe having a pig roast, or something like that. I mean, this brings together communities. This is a good thing.
Thank you.
And most people, when they look for houses, they want parks nearby. And this park is literally coming to them, and I don't know why people are against it.
Thank you very much. Lou, come on up.
Lou DiSocio, 17 Styles Road, Summit. I'd like to thank David for holding these meetings and counsel. I know it's been very trying. I don't know if Mayor Glad remembers, but back then, about 20 years ago, they were going to put a freight train through there. Okay? We started a coalition to fight the freight trains. Okay? So I would say, would you rather have a park or a freight train in your backyard? I think it's a no-brainer. On the Union County Advisory, Transportation Advisory Board, Trails to Rails came to us about 20 years ago and wanted to do something like this. If we'd done it then, we wouldn't be running to these problems. This is a plus. It's taking a blight on society, on this town, and turning into something positive. I urge council to vote for this, get behind it. It's going to beautify the town. It's going to bring more people walking back and forth. It'll probably eliminate a lot of traffic. People could leave their cars home. They could take their bicycles back and forth in and out of town, coming from East Summit right into town. They could use Bryant Park. Overlook is another thing. I know Overlook mentioned that if they have somebody in the hospital in a very serious illness, they could go out and use the park to sit down and think and plan things. So I think this is such a positive thing for this town, and I urge you. David, I'd like to thank you for your good meeting. I thought you were going to bang the gavel a little too hard. Thank you.
I didn't bang it that bad. Thank you. Okay. Jay, come on up.
Just one additional comment. I'd like you, we have on our website information about the change in property values for houses located along park lines, along parks. And it's very positive. I won't go into details. It's on the website. And the overwhelming evidence with respect to property values near trails like this is that property values increase. There's a lot of research to be had. I won't take the time, but it's available.
Okay, thank you, Jay. Okay. Mary Jo, you've asked question, you've asked comment. I want to see if there's, I don't want, no, no. We're not going to do this double, triple rounds. Yes, sir, come on up. And then you next. Hold on. And we'll get through this.
Carrie Hardy, 1 Oak Knoll Road. I've lived in town since 1967, and I think I'm very pleased to hear about all of this. But one thing that I think, again, needs to be pointed out very, very clearly, we may remember when how difficult it was at the end of Springfield Avenue, getting under the train track. There was not much of a road there. The city or somebody started doing a lot of work replacing that. And there's a sidewalk now as you go, and Springfield Avenue towards the car wash. I can't believe, when I drive down there, how many people are using that sidewalk. And so I think that's just a small example of how many people will start to use this trail, connecting different parts of town, bringing it together. And I think that's a real plus. Thank you.
Okay. Yes, sir. Come on up. And then you, ma'am. Thanks.
Hi, my name is Al Lord. I'm a City of Summit resident for over 20 years and a business owner in Summit for over 13 years. My wife in the pink dress in the back, Lucy Lord. And our son, Henry, started this project for his Eagle Scout project. He did the two-tenths of a mile that started this project. And I can tell you, it was a complete disaster back there before it was ever started. And I can attest to Jay's, although I guess he just left, but that guy Jay did a lot of, helped out. A lot of Summit residents helped. A lot of the local area residents helped and got the project going. And my wife, Lucy, and I look to donate and to give back to City of Summit. We were involved with a community center, with a number of other projects. And obviously, we're emotionally attached to this project, given Henry and the Boy Scouts helped to clear the land to begin with. And so when we heard about it, we say, "Well, yeah, of course, you got to build a bridge." And so we donate the money to build the bridge, to extend the park line. And I think some of the comments that were made, yeah, the bridge really does start this project and to take it further. And so, you know, obviously, we were personally invested in, and it was a no-brainer. To us, it's a free park. Yeah, of course, of course Summit should do it. We are a green town, right? City of Summit wants a green project. It's a free project. Of course, we're going to do this. Of course, we want the safety. Of course, we want residents to go from east to west. You can find hundreds of reasons, little reasons, to do, not to do anything. But this, to me, is a no-brainer. And I urge you to please move forward with this worthwhile cause. Thank you.
Thank you. Ma'am, come on up.
Hello. Hi, everyone. This is my first time here. So sorry, I'm not a regular, but the park line actually was something that spoke to me. My name's Melinda Giffenfreder. I'm at 21 Clark Street. No, it's not in my backyard. Okay, but it is in my town, and I do have some say of what happens here as well. I'm a Realtor, you know? So some might hate me for coming up here and saying this. I didn't do statistics or anything like that, but nice parks, close to homes, bring your value up. 30-year-old kitchens, don't. So if you want to save the money, keep your home updated, because if interest rates go higher, your property values are going to go lower. So, and that's got nothing to do with the park line or any of us, unfortunately. That's with the Fed. So, God, I hate public speaking.
You're doing fine.
I think that, you know, because it's not in my backyard, yes, I do have a little bit of a difference in feeling. But I think that if the majority of the town moves forward with the idea, then it is the responsibility to make sure that whoever's backyard is affected, you know, they get the fencing, they get the privacy, they get what they need to satisfy. I'm in East Summit, and all I ever hear from East Summit is, "We don't get this, and we don't get that, and we..." Well, what do you want? What does East Summit want if you don't want a park, and you don't want housing, and you don't want, like, what do we want? So that's it. That's my statement. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. Yes, ma'am. Come on up.
Hi, my name is Pat Federi. I live at 60 Upper Overlook Road. My house, actually, I rent from Overlook Hospital. My house, my garage, is actually right where the trail is. And I was very, very skeptical. I'm like, oh, my goodness, all these people are going to be coming by. I have to say, I feel very safe. Very, very safe. And I just feel that, you know, people are very respectful of my house. They don't go on the driveway. They go down, all the way down to Morris Avenue. So I'm very grateful for everybody that has actually been part of this park line because I really think it's going to be wonderful.
Thank you very much. Okay. Larry, did you give a comment yet? No? Come on up.
I think you're probably tired of hearing from me, Dave.
No, that's all right. We still have the rest of the council's agenda to go through tonight.
Got some sleeping bags? I'm going to be brief. And once again, I want to thank everybody on the council and everybody in the room because everyone made great points from both perspectives. And I am not anti-trail, I'm not anti-park. I'm an avid runner. I use all that stuff. I just plead on all of you on this council, when you talk about putting this 20 feet on an elevated path through someone's backyard, it's a different story. Most of the people in this room, it doesn't affect in that way. Okay? The property value, yes, it increases if you have a park near your home, but not if your home is up against a park. Fire risk, it happens if your home is near a park. This all comes back, and I know I'm in the minority here, and if you did a vote with all the residents of Summit, we'd probably lose 90% to 10%. Okay? This is the little guy fighting the big guy. I don't have the engineer. I don't have the PR executive. I don't have the PowerPoint. I'm just pleading you, person to person, okay? I bought a house. I've got a beautiful backyard. I've got deer walking through it. I've got vegetation. It's all going to go away. Okay? And on top of that, when I travel a lot for work, I've got to worry about the safety of my wife, who's home. Okay? This is so close to my house. This is so close to some people's house in here. And when they say to us, "We talked to the people on Henry Street," it's just another lie from the park line. This is signatures from people on Henry Street. And I know there's a couple residents here from Henry Street that are in favor of it, but the majority of them are against it. So when they say they talked and got feedback, never. They never did. They never spoke to anybody. Okay? And the last thing I want to say, David, is you asked them to come here tonight with answers. We were all at the meeting in December. You said, "Come with answers, come with solutions." All I see is a fence and access points. All you council members asked great questions. They didn't have answers to it. How many do-overs are they going to get? I've heard tonight, this has been going on since 2004. That's 15 years. Where are the answers? Where's the water going to go that's going to be drained? Okay? How's the EMS fire truck's going to get up there? They can't keep coming back to you saying, "We'll find out an answer." Enough do-overs. Let's make a decision on this, and let's move on. Stop giving them multiple chances to try to ask their professional engineers and their PowerPoint and their PR representatives to come up with answers. The answer should be now. You asked them to come up with the answers in December. They showed up here tonight with the same presentation that they had before with some new fences. That's it. That's the only difference.
Thank you, Larry. Okay. Any other, any other comments? No.
Yes.
No, no, no. We've already heard from Mary Jo.
Oh, sorry. Okay, sorry, sorry. I just saw the hand. I apologize.
Yes, thank you, Matt.
I'm good. I'm okay, thanks.
Anybody else that hasn't spoken? Okay. That's it for public comments. I'm not taking any, I'm not, we are here at almost 10:30. We have gone on for three hours. People have waited. We're not hearing from people over and over again. It's time for now for council to speak as to what, and I'm not taking any interruptions when I speak. Rather than, my colleagues, I'm going to, I didn't speak, I didn't ask questions necessarily, interrupted other people's questions, but I didn't ask my own. Let me, let me say this because I've struggled with this. And for those of you who have followed this know that when I first got onto council, I was the lone vote against, actually, the license agreement to, from the county and the city to enter into for the construction of the park line. But I've thought about it, and I have walked there, and I think there's certainly merits to doing this. Right? Because one can see in the future how it could be used and the potential for it, and that you would have not only this connection, but it is, it is, it is very rare to be able to build a park, you know, basically a fully developed city. And so this is one of our few opportunities to take something that is underutilized. It may not be, people in, you know, some people look at nature as it's just growing by itself and see weeds and disaster. Other people look at that same area and say, "Okay, this is just nature reclaiming land and filling it for itself." And that has its own purpose, and it has its own beauty, and it has its own perspective. But I can see the purpose of this. Where I am, though, because I think the Park Line Foundation came with an ask here. the Park Line Foundation came with an ask here, and the ask is, "Let us go forward with building, designing the bridge." That, that's their ask. My, my struggle here is, we have now gone through two meetings with this, and I still don't feel as if I have the specifics that people have been asking. These are some very basic questions. And I don't wanna hear, honestly, I do not, with all due respect, I do not want to hear about other sites around the country. I don't really care what happens in Pennsylvania, to be blunt about it, because I don't live there. And these people don't live there. They're asking legitimate questions, and so is this council, about specifics, about how this project will be built. Councilwoman Fox is right. If we say okay to the bridge, we are basically a fait accompli, because it is a waste of people who are willing to donate the money and say, "Okay, we're gonna build a bridge," but then subsequently, we as council say, "Oh, no. You know what? This, this drainage doesn't work, the fencing doesn't work, we're not gonna go through this project." So, what is the, what are we gonna do? Put a lock at the, at the great end of the bridge? And I don't know how, I, I don't know what is the mechanism to get this sequencing right, where we can get these basic things answered, get designs for how we're gonna get to the access points. Okay, we've satisfied some questions. We've satisfied the questions with the security. The police chief, the fire chief have answered, basically. Can, can people get rescued? Yes. Okay? So, that's a question that previously existed. That's off the table, I think, in my opinion. I'll give you my opinion. I think that's been answered, because they have repeatedly said, "Don't worry, we can get there." But the other questions about how the design of the elements, drainage and privacy, those things still need to be done. And I just don't know, I'm struggling myself right now with how you sequence this, where you guys either work with the residents or come up with some details. But the other thing I'm struggling with is the following. We're sitting here in July. As those of you who are following what council is doing, we have a full agenda of stuff, especially dealing with redevelopment coming up. There's only so much bandwidth that we all have. We're all volunteers here, right? Okay? I mean, most of us here have full-time jobs that we have to go to. I don't have the time to keep on having meeting upon meeting of people talking to me about how things will happen. I want people to come in here and show me, "This is what we have designed. This will work. We have gone out there. This will happen." So, I don't know what to ask of you guys, to be honest. Maybe it's a agreement, okay, that we have some specificity where we say, "If the following conditions are met, we, we," and I'm just gonna, just talking it out loud with folks here, and you guys can all react and say, "David, that's a really stupid idea, and that's fine." I'm good with that, honestly. But maybe we amend the memorandum of understanding. Okay? And we say, "Within such and such period of time, the following deliverables will be provided as a schedule, okay, of access points that specify, of, of fencing, that such and such, the lighting is such and such." And we say, "Okay, once we get those deliverables done, then we go on to the bridge," because then you know that A, that it'll be built, and B, the residents know what to expect when it is done. So, that's, that's I'm gonna throw out as an idea to how to move this ball forward, because there's only 24 hours in a day, there's only so many council meetings, and I don't know how else we can come to a resolution with this, because I don't think tonight, I'm not ready, I will tell you right now, to vote and say, "Okay, let's go ahead with designing a bridge," because I don't know where this bridge is going to, or if it's ever gonna be built or constructed, or where it's happening, to be honest. And I would have liked to have come in here, to be honest, and be able, and I've talked to the park line folks, so they know that nothing I'm saying right now, the people who I've talked to on the park line know that what I'm saying right now is nothing different than what I've said, which is, "I need specificity," and that's what these people in the audience have been asking for. So, that's, that's what my thoughts are. I'll open up to everybody else. Beth?
I went last time, the last time, I'll go first this time. I have some of the same concerns. Here's some of the things I jotted down during the meeting that, you know, I would wanna know more about before I could vote on a bridge. There's no specific drainage plan, there's no grading plan, there's no specific site plans of where exactly, you know, the widths and the, you know, exact plans for that. There's no plant studies, there's no drawings and specific renderings of access points, and whether they, you know, would be ADA compliant, you know, how that, how the access points would happen. I had the same reaction looking at the ramp and all these access points. I'm looking at, you know, I'm thinking of the specific topology in our town, and I don't see where those ramps go, and I can't envision it. So, I, to tell me that a ramp would work in these areas, I can't see it. I don't know how that would happen, and I wouldn't wanna see that. No environmental borings. All those things would be, all those things could be deal breakers, depending on what the answers are. And I can't, I can't move forward at this point. I, you know, I'm, I struggle too. I see the benefits of this project. I see so many, I, I, I agree with one of the last comments, that the sidewalk that connects by Huntley Tavern under Springfield is used, and I love the access between East Summit and downtown. And I, there's so many benefits I see, but I've also stood in the backyards and looked, and I'm really having a hard time envisioning how the privacy works, and how I can make the residents who are directly impacted comfortable and feel safe with this project, and that's a big concern to me, too. So, I, I would wanna, if I was a resident, and as a council member voting on this project, I would wanna see some kind of mock-up with something that, that assures me that there's privacy for these residents, and that they're gonna feel safe and secure with this in their backyard before I could ever move forward and say yes to this. So, the, all these, you know, I made a list of these specific things I heard. Those are all things I would need more information about before, and I think those are things we need to say before we move forward this bridge, 'cause I, you know, I don't want, I don't wanna spend this money going forward and then have a deal breaker come up that there's an endangered plant on the trail, or there's environmental borings that are gonna make it unsafe, or something else that's gonna stop this. And I think we need answers to those questions before we can move forward. But I agree, we've spent, you know, I also sympathize with, some of these questions were asked, I remember, at the meeting at the first aid. I, I know the environmental boring question was asked, the drainage was addressed, some of these things were addressed at that meeting, and then we're back here again, and we're told that that's gonna happen at some point, or we're gonna, you know, that, that's easy to, easy to answer, and, and those things. And I just, I, I don't think we can move forward without those answers.
Anyone else? Matt? Oh, sorry, sorry, sorry. Let me go back and forth. Marjorie?
I, I agree with a lot of what David and Beth have said. As I commented before, I think that dealing with the bridge now is, puts us in a position where we really, where we're sinking money into, you know, and time and energy into a project, where we don't have a lot of the, the answers. You know, I feel a, a real sense of frustration, because we have asked these questions, and I've been on the committee that has been asking these questions for a year and a half now, and I still don't have answers, and I still don't know everything that I feel that I need to know to make sure that we're, we're acting responsibly. I think this is a great project. I, when I went out with Jeff and, and looked at sort of the linkages to all the different trails, and the way that it would tie this, the community together, I, I do see the value in this. But I think we need to take this, we need to do this systematically. We need to answer questions before we start building a bridge. And I, I think David's idea of setting up a schedule for deliverables may be the way we need to do it. Our memorandum of understanding did say what, what things we wanted to see, but, but the, the dates seem to have slipped, you know, and, and we need to, I think, go back to the basics on this.
Anyone else? Matt?
Thank you, Council President. I just wanted to bring up, just to go further on what I said about quantitative data. Dan, over here, he mentioned that there were 38, he left, looks like, that there were 38 houses that directly abut the, the proposed trail, which is the number I was looking for. So, I would love to see a survey sent to those 38 houses and see what they think. You know, if we find that 95% of them are against it, then that's, we have to ta, I mean, not that 38 houses should determine what we do over the whole town, but we certainly have to take their, their responses into consideration. That's my thought.
Thank you. Steve?
Okay. Thanks, everybody, for spending your Tuesday night here. I, I guess my thoughts on this is, I, I support, as we all do, the, the healthy aspects, the, and, and all those things that it brings, the connectivity around the town. My personal opinion on the schematics of the bridges, I, I think it's more about a study to understand what is exactly needed, and it's all of the, the thoughts that we are expressing. What needs to be done on the bridge? What's the height? What's the width? What are the schematics? How much is it gonna cost? And, and I, if I, when I look at a project like that, I look at it and say, "This is just part of the planning of that project." I do agree with my fellow councilmen that we need to have more additional information on the grounds, the soil testing, and the various access points, because those are all issues that are on the development of the, of a, of the house, or of the project. You know, I look at, at a project that we, whether it's a kitchen, you know, where are we gonna put a kitchen? Where are we gonna do all this kind of stuff? I think we're still in the planning stage, you know? And I, I truly think, in my opinion, the, the Park Line Foundation, if they get into a, a, a cost prohibitive project, they're going to come back and say, "You know, this project is beyond what we were looking at." If there is an environmental issue, if the bridge is beyond the cost that, that, you know, the Lords have, have, have set, we would donate. I think, in my opinion, we're not voting on anything tonight anyhow, you know? And, and there's no decision tonight. I mean, we were just given a presentation that said, "This is what we propose." Yes, there are some questions that need to be answered, without a doubt. And, and so I think we have to get those answers. This Park Line group has only been working on it for two years. Yeah, we've had that, you know, simmering for a while, but, you know, something like this, we just need to do the proper planning, and, you know, poor planning results in poor results. So, that's all, that's my comment.
Okay. Thank you, Steve.
Sorry.
Wait, wait, wait. Does anybody else besides?
Oh, yeah.
Mike, do you wanna go?
Yeah, sorry.
Sure. Yeah, someone mentioned it, I, maybe it was Lou. This, this abandoned rail line was actually the first time I've ever had civic engagement in Summit. It, you know, they're, they had these meetings. I had just moved to town, and they were talking about putting an industrial rail line through town, carrying god knows what.
Waste.
Waste, you know, chemicals, whatever. The community went nuts, as they should've. And it was, a lot of people came together and stuff. That, that was the first time I was civically engaged in this town. So, it sticks in my, my brain. When, when this project first got floated, that's what I immediately thought of as well. I go, "Anything that can raise the bar to stop a proposal like that is a good thing." You know, rights of way are hard to find, and companies keep them for a reason. So, that, that's just a little bit of background. So, when I heard about it, I was like, "Well, love to hear more about it." I'm not a person who likes to spend money on anything that we don't need in, in our city. I think people know that. However...
We should spend money on things we don't need.
Yeah. However, I, I go back. Like, I also love history. It's almost 100 years, and I think it's 1921. Oak Knoll gave the city Memorial Field for a dollar. I was a, I was part of the school grounds. They, they didn't need it. I think they kinda regret maybe doing that now, but they gave it, they gave it for a dollar. Yeah, we have to maintain it, but that is a tremendous asset in our town. And I don't know what Paul would come up with, with what it costs to maintain that, but I think if you ask anybody in this community, that is dollars well spent. And we're talking about a park. So, look, 10,800 bucks is money. The asset in and of itself, to recreate it on a charity's dime, is, is a gift to the city. And I feel sometimes we might be looking a gift horse in the mouth, because we don't realize, like, this is a tremendous thing that this group is doing, to put this together. So, it could be a tremendous asset. I mean, just some of the words I heard today, you know, talk about bringing community, getting to know your neighbors, helping out from a safety perspective, and your kids from one point to the other. These are, you can't put prices on those things. That's incredible. It's, it's an amazing asset. And I, I sometimes despair, because when these big projects happen, we seem to get stuck in the weeds, where we're like, "Oh, but what about this? And what about that? What about that?" I get that. They're all important, but sometimes I feel this is gonna die of a death of a thousand paper cuts, because there's always gonna be a question, always gonna be something that's gonna come up to say, "Whoa, I, I, I'm confused as to what this looks like," or "I don't know what this, we haven't answered this question." I think it was Kate from one Henry Street, is she still here? She, she said this, "We're not the first community to build a rails-to-trail thing. We're not. These are all answerable, solvable questions." I just wish council would, would kinda at least show that, "Hey, I love this idea. We are gonna make this happen." The other thing I thought was interesting this evening, everybody who abuts Phase One, who spoke tonight, so they, they live next to a living, breathing example of the park line. Every single person who spoke tonight loves it. So, I, I guess, Matt, I, I agree, you know, we should know what these people think, but we should also know what the people who actually live next to it. They all came out and supported it. I didn't hear a single person who lives next to it say, "Oh, I hate this thing. It stinks. I can't believe the city's doing this to me." None of them said that. That, to me, is an amazing testimonial on what people look at around this and what it could be. And I get it. Not everything is answered here. You know, I, I have an idea of what these ramps may look like, but, you know, I, I don't know what they'd look like on every single site that, that's there, but I have a pretty good idea. Drainage, again, they've done drainage on these things all the time. We are not the first town to do it. So, to hold this thing up, because we haven't seen a drawing on where the pipes go, like, these are this minutia thing where we're, we're like, like, these are solvable issues. These, everyone on this council is smart enough and asks the right questions on implementation, that this is gonna get implemented properly. I have no doubt. David is not gonna let this thing get built shabbily. I guarantee you that. After I'm long gone off this council, I know he's gonna say, "Oh, well, have you thought about that?" And stuff. And it's gonna be done right. It is. And, and I just, like I said, I, we keep saying, "Oh, well, let's wait, and let's do thi-" I just wish we would get behind something and say, "I love it. Let's do it." It makes, it's gonna be an amazing community asset. And yeah, I, I know we, I need to see a drawing for that, but I want this to happen. It's gonna be a fantastic asset in our community, and it's something that I'm gonna be proud to have been a part of in my little tiny way to, to make happen and leave a legacy that they're gonna be using, just like Memorial Field, 100 years from now. And that's my comment.
Well, Mike, before I, 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 I think, as I said, you know, I started off with it as a no on this, and I have gone out there, I've seen the potential, and I think it would be a good project. So, if you want me to say, "Yeah, it's a, it's a good project," yeah. But I do think, and you're absolutely right, these are totally answerable questions. And my frustration with it is, we've had two meetings where we've had totally answerable questions not being answered. Right? And that's not on the city, because the Park Line Foundation took it upon itself to say, "We are going to come up and do these things. We are going to do the building for it." If you said, "Look, we're gonna give you, the City of Summit, all the money. We don't want anything to do with the construction. We wanna change the agreement. We're not gonna do it. We're just going to go ahead and give you the money," then, then it's upon Paul and the City of Summit to figure out all those issues. But that's not how this is structured. And what I'm trying to do is try to figure out in a rational way that everybody can figure out how we're gonna proceed going forward, because it is going to be beyond your time on council, it's gonna be beyond my time on council, because this will take a long time. That's the beauty of this. If we can get it built, it is something that will have a real impact in the city. And so I want it to be done, but I want people to answer these questions that we all agree should be answerable. So, maybe if you give a schedule, and you say, "Listen, if within 60 days, come up with all of these things, finish off, then we'll move on. We'll go ahead. We'll go ahead and look at the bridge, and we will know, people will know. This is how they're gonna do the next steps, and we're done." But I think there is, at least in my head, I don't think it's unreasonable to say, "You've had all of this time to come up with answers to these same questions that have been going on." I don't think access is a new question. I don't think parking is a new question. I don't think lighting is a new question. I don't think fencing or privacy is a new question. I think these are all existing questions. And we have given, we've given the foundation two attempts at it, to get these questions answered, but maybe we're not, we're not making ourselves clear enough. And so I think maybe this meeting helped in the sense that, "Hey, let's just answer these questions, and then we'll move on to the next phase." You have, I think I'm hearing, and I'll wait for Greg to, to comment, but I think what I've been hearing is basically almost- been hearing is basically almost everybody saying, hey, this is a really good idea. I don't think you're hearing people saying, oh, no, this is a really bad idea and we never want to hear from it again. I think you're hearing people going, yeah, but we have a fiduciary duty to the residents of 22,000 people in this town who say to us, okay, how are you spending your money? How are you spending your prioritization and time? And are you making sure when you do a project, it is not simply rah rah rah, let's do it, but rather you've done your diligence? That's what's expected of us. So I don't think we're doing anything out of the ordinary that we would do for any large-scale project. I'll find, I sat on the planning board. When developers come to the planning board, they do not come in and say, look at what a great building we're going to build, isn't this wonderful? They come in with specific plans, how are they going to build it? And that's what we vote on. We vote on specific things to be built in town. If we're expecting a developer or private party to come in, I don't expect anything different in construction than we do. Greg, your turn.
Sure. So thank you, Council President. I was going to say mostly the same stuff. So I support the idea of this project, I want that to be perfectly clear. I've heard from my esteemed colleagues here that we all generally tend to agree that this in concept is a wonderful idea. There continues to be this sense of ambiguity about every single one of the details. We've been stuck in this conceptual phase for years. And additionally, we've been asked to trust that the money will be there to fund it. According to the expert, we're not even 10% funded yet. We need to have a full plan and we need to have guarantees that it's going to be funded. We need to have trees there, access points there, and exactly how it'll be built. I was on the planning board with you, we expect that from every homeowner and we expect that of every business owner who seeks to do any size project in Summit. I support the project, I'll say that again. Having concerns and doing the due diligence is not being against something, it's not getting stuck in the weeds, these are important weeds. These questions matter. And I agree that we need to amend the memorandum of agreement to include the things that we've discussed on a very specific timeline and with fundraising benchmarks attached. That is the way I think we go about this, in a responsible way. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. So we didn't have any way, anything to vote on. The Parkline Foundation, I think, would like to make a proposal for the next council meeting before we bring for August. What I would suggest respectfully is maybe we have some offline conversations between the Parkline Foundation and city and council members and see if we can figure out how to get through this together. You've heard now, I think, where we are. If that seems like a path forward, because I do think, again, I think there is general support for this project from this council. So you have that. Now the question is how do you utilize it to get from that point to the point of actually being able to construct stuff. With that, I'm going to call for a break because we've been going on for nearly, and thank you, everyone, for coming out tonight. All right, we're back in session. Okay. Are there any public comments, topics that are not on the agenda? Okay, seeing none, moving along. Ordinances for hearing, there's one ordinance for hearing. Madam Clerk, would you please read 19-3196?
An ordinance amending Chapter Four, General Licensing, Section 4-5, Licensing of Peddlers and Solicitors of the Code of the City of Summit, County of Union, New Jersey.
Councilman Bowman.
Thank you, Council President. Okay. Basically, we were, per outside counsel, Summit is clarifying our policy on licensing of these individuals. We are streamlining the process, identifying the time period solicitation is allowed and clarifying our fee and insurance requirements. Make no mistakes, all solicitors and will continue to be required to obtain licenses with proper authorities reviewing the applications. They will need to have the documents and, proper documents, and they will be restricted to the hours of solicitation can endure. With this ordinance, we will be ensuring that Summit is in compliance with federal and state requirements. I move, we hear this ordinance.
I second.
Okay. Any comments or questions from members of council? Oh, no, 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 we have to take a, we have to take a roll call. This is an ordinance. We talk, we talk, sorry. Thank you, Steve. Questions from members of council?
He's lost nine.
Mike, really?
I don't blame you, David. So just a question, so what was, did someone come to us and say?
Yes.
I want to solicit after six o'clock?
You, this happened last year, a law firm out of Texas, on behalf of a solicitor, wrote a letter indicating that your ordinance was in violation of a number of court rulings throughout the country, federal court rulings that, based on First Amendment restrictions, time, place, manner restrictions. And so what we did is we advised them, don't file suit, we'll look at the ordinance, and we've amended it similarly in other jurisdictions to comply with the court rulings on what are reasonable. So for example, having a solicitation end at dusk is not reasonable, courts have said nine o'clock is a reasonable time. Certain restrictions on fees, if they're too prohibitive, that's been struck down. So what we've done is just brought your ordinance that has probably been in place for decades in compliance with recent court rulings in the Third Circuit and throughout the country that have dealt with pedal ordinances. It's the same law firm, by the way, that hit a number of towns last year, and they hit a number of towns this year.
So they, specifically, they reached out to Summit?
Oh, yeah, they targeted, they pointed out exactly what was wrong with it.
No, my personal opinion is I disagree with whoever judge said that it's appropriate for someone to knock on my door at nine o'clock at night. That's, I completely disagree with that.
Right, well, but...
It's my comment.
But folks, but folks can put no solicitation signs on their door, your property, you have that right.
Okay. Any other comments or questions from members of council?
As a follow-up, if you put a no solicitation sign on your door, then someone still solicited even with a sign there, what would be your remedies?
I'd call that gentleman that's sitting right over there.
Ah, okay.
We're going to come and speak to them. I don't know, going to issue anyway, I mean, it's our discretion, you know, seeing what time it is.
Yeah, but if somebody's bothering you or you don't answer the door, that's why I always look at the window and if I see somebody I don't know, wave to them and go back to the kitchen.
My dogs don't make that distinction, unfortunately.
Yeah, I know. Right? But, you know, to that point, you know, common sense says you're not going to be out walking the street in dark, you know, and I, hopefully, that these peddlers and solicitors are going to have enough common sense not to be walking in December in the dark, you know, in the snow.
When it's 30 degrees.
You know, and I agree 100% with everybody, I let my dog out.
Councilman, I can tell you, the two towns that I was confronted with this last year and we made the changes, there's been no impact whatsoever on the town in terms of an increase in solicitation. I, not publicly, but I'll tell you why I think you got the letter.
This is public, of course.
What's that?
This is a public forum, of course.
Yeah, no, I said publicly, I'm not going to tell you why I think you got the letter, but you got a letter from a law firm, so we need to say no more.
Okay. Okay, any other comments or questions from members of council? Any comments or questions from members of the public? Further discussion, okay? Consider the hearing closed. Ordinances for final consideration, 19-3196. Madam Clerk, would you please read the title of that ordinance?
An ordinance amending Chapter Four, General Licensing, Section 4-5, Licensing of Peddlers and Solicitors of the Code of the City of Summit, County of Union, New Jersey.
Councilman Bowman.
Thank you, Council President. As we discussed, you know, I move this ordinance for final consideration.
I second.
Roll call, please.
Mr. Bowman.
Aye.
Ms. Fox.
Aye.
Mr. Gould.
Aye.
Ms. Little.
Aye.
Mr. McTiernan.
Aye.
Mr. Barton.
Aye.
President and I do.
Aye. Okay, we have one ordinance for introduction, it's 6556. Madam Clerk, would you please read the title of that ordinance?
An ordinance amending the code, Chapter Seven, Traffic, Section 7-8 Parking, Subsection 7-8.5 Parking, Time Limited on Certain Streets, and Subsection 7-8.7 Parking Prohibited at All Times on Certain Streets.
Councilman Barton.
Thank you, Council President. Ordinance number 6556 is related to street parking on Lincoln Avenue. This is the road that intersects with Morris Ave, close to the businesses, restaurants, and a partially residential area. There's often parking and traffic congestion in the area. The existing ordinance prohibits parking on the east side of the street, closer to Selgin. The ordinance being introduced today allows parking on both sides of the street with a two-hour time limit between 8:00 a.m. and 6:00 p.m. I move this ordinance for introduction.
Thank you. Oh, a second.
I second.
Sorry, yes, thank you. Okay, roll call, please.
Mr. Bowman.
Aye.
Ms. Fox.
Oh, wait. I was supposed to second.
I'm not on public safety. It's all security motion.
It's fine, it's all second.
I don't do any seconding after 11:00 p.m., sorry.
I'm sorry.
Okay, Mr. Bowman.
Aye.
Ms. Fox.
Aye.
Mr. Gould.
Aye.
Ms. Little.
Aye.
Ms. McTiernan.
Aye.
Mr. Barton.
Aye, thanks for coming to my rescue.
Okay, okay, we're all a little tired here, 11:05.
Sorry.
Okay, we have just a couple of resolutions, we're going to get through this. Law and Labor, Councilman Bowman, you have one resolution.
Yes, I do. Resolution, Law and Labor Resolution Number One, 6545 is a resolution extending sick leave with pay for a DPW sewer and maintenance employee. This individual has been sick for a while, but this sick leave with pay will be through 9/17. Employee has plenty of sick time, as we discussed in closed session, we'd hopefully, he will be back soon, and it is consistent with the time available. I move, we accept this resolution.
I second.
Okay. Any comments or questions from members of council? Any comments or questions from members of the public? Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay, Community Programs has one. Councilman Gould.
Thank you, Council President. At the, at a recent council meeting, we discussed having a beautiful piece of art created by Hellbent on the Tier Garage Inn, and we agreed to it. And at the time, we had a lot of comments that said, you know, it'd be great if we could paint the other side as well, and everybody seemed to want to do that. So we returned and chatted again with Mr. Hellbent, who agreed to do it for an additional $3,000, which is going to be split equally between the city and the parking services utility, and I wholeheartedly move this resolution to get both sides painted. Second.
Okay. Any comments or questions from members of council? Any comments or questions from members of the public? Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay, we have a bunch of capital projects, I think the first four can be bundled?
Sure, we can bundle.
Yeah, you can bundle.
Bundle all four?
Why not?
Okay, great. All right, so these are all resolutions to authorize grant, submission of grant applications. First one is for the Transit Village Program, it's for Phase Three of the Village Green. Second one is for the New Jersey DOT Safe Streets to Transit Program, and this is for pedestrian safety measures. Third one is for the DOT, it's basically road projects, so that's the Park Avenue Improvement Project, that's our second priority. And then the last one is, Resolution Four, is for West End Avenue Improvement Project, and that's our first priority, road improvement project. None of these require a match, and these are all great projects that need to get done and hopefully we get some of this funding, so I move this resolution, these resolutions.
I wholeheartedly second.
Okay, any comments or questions from members of council? Any comments or questions from members of the public? Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay, capital project number five, please, Councilman Bowman.
This resolution, thank you, Council President. This resolution authorizes the city to request an agreement from Union County to install a rectangular rapid flashing beacon, and this is at the existing mid-block crossing at Bryant Park across from Springfield, across Springfield Avenue. This is a very busy intersection, it's an existing mid-block intersection, and we currently have an extra beacon, so this would be, this is a great project and at very low cost. So since it's in a location on a county road, we need an agreement with Union County. I move this resolution.
I second.
Okay, any comments or questions from members of council?
I do have one. It's not, I guess it's more about the beacons. We're put, I thought we were putting one at the intersection of Morris and Bryant Park.
Oh, Elm.
We had a crossing, we had...
Doing that, too, right?
Yeah. One's that one in, I guess.
Paul, you want to come up? Do you know? Or Aaron?
It's kind of related.
We approved it.
Yeah.
For you, Council President. Yes, the bottom posts are in currently, DPW installs them, and then the manufacturer will put their unit on top, which they said either at the end of next week or the beginning of whatever that week winds up being, so mid to late July.
Hopefully, this will be quicker.
This one we have already, so this one will be all by public work, so we just need the agreement with Union County.
Excuse me, I have a follow-up with Mr. Schrager. The RRFB on Forest is no longer working.
As of?
Again, yesterday.
Today or as of yesterday?
Yesterday, I saw it.
Okay, we'll check it, that one has some battery issues.
That one is so frustrating, and I'm sorry to bring it up in this forum, but I wanted to say it, thank you.
Yeah, we'll check it out.
Okay. Anybody else? Okay, yeah, the light's blinking over there. Okay, any comments from members of public? Okay, any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Capital Projects Number Six, Councilwoman Fox.
Thank you, Council President. This resolution authorizes Change Order Number One for the 2017 Drainage Improvement Project. All the work has been completed satisfactorily, and this change order adjusts the contract by $41,257 or 18% reduction. And these savings were realized based on changes to the project made in the field to, and because of these changes, less pipe was required and less road was ripped up, so it saved us quite a bit of money. And so I commend the Engineering Division for finding these changes and bringing the price down.